Anyone who wishes anything on the agenda changed?
I move approval as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the regular meeting, approval of vouchers, request for road closure for a marathon, approval of the law enforcement agreement between Pennington County Sheriff's Office and the Black Hills National Forest, approval of a resolution to discharge liens of deceased and unknown persons, adopt a highway program application for Necky Oak Road, and to acknowledge receipt of the annual report for the Pennington County Highway. Does anyone wish any of those items removed from the consent agenda? From the audience or the commission, either one.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair. I would just like to note that on the Adopt a Highway Program on Necky Oak Road, that's through North Steel is volunteering to clean approximately two miles of that road.
Thank you. And they will be joining a host of other local groups that we'll be recognizing here shortly. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Hearing no further remarks, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Heinie, are you prepared to make some presentations?
Good morning, Heinie Jungi, the Pennington Highway Superintendent. Yes, we are here to recognize groups that voluntarily agreed to clean up our roadways and pick up trash, and we do this every year to acknowledge their participation for Adopt a Highway. And just for your information, we have 39 organizations last year that voluntarily cleaned up our roadways, and resulted in 88.3 miles being cleaned up. And if there's any other organizations out there, we do have five pieces of road that are needy, that we wouldn't mind having somebody pick up the trash. It makes it look good and makes the public aware that there's organizations that care about how our region looks, and we really appreciate it. And Connie, my administrative assistant, she kind of runs the program, does the maps, does all the contacts and all the paperwork, so she's going to present the certificates to the organizations that agreed to be here today to accept it in person, and I believe we have nine of them. So with that, Connie, I'll let you take over.
All right, our nine groups. The first group is the 28th Security Forces Squadron. How about the 28th Security Forces Squadron S4?
Connie, excuse me, I've got a meeting at the base not too long ago. I can take those out and give them to them if you want me to.
If you'd like to do that, that'd be great. If not, I'm prepared to mail them to you. Wonderful, thanks. The American Institute of Chemical Engineers. The Cosmopolitan Club.
They said they'd be here.
They were in security.
Yeah. Cub Scout Pack 74. Someone from Hart Ranch Resort. There we go. All right. Thank you. The South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Metallurgical Engineering Department. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Student Members of the American Chemical Society. I've seen the T-shirt. And the last one is Western Dakota Insurers. That should do it. I will be mailing the rest of the certificates out in the mail.
Thank you, Connie.
And just a reminder, we also send a letter along that's signed by the chairman and myself, so to let them know we appreciate their efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a lien request.
Hello, my name's Cordelia Martinez Perez. I'm here to request a lien request in my name for $200 and some dollars. I'm a single mom, I'm currently going to school, no employment right now. I am married, my husband is currently in Mexico right now, and financially, it's kind of a stressful thing right now. I'm trying to see if I can get a request to release it in my name so I can pursue other things, further my education and things like that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't show or see any income shown at all.
No, I don't. I'm currently on housing. I have help, I have, I use the sources out there for my rent and stuff. I have two young children, they're seven and nine. Currently taking some classes at the Currie Learning Center, and then I'm going to be scheduled to start Western Dakota Tech in August, so.
I couldn't hear what, where did you see you're getting your income to pay your rent and stuff?
I'm on Section 8, I'm on housing.
Okay. And?
I'm on housing, and I have a social worker that I use through DSS.
Okay, and the amount of the lien is either $200 or $250?
I think so, I believe so. It's between, I believe it's $200.
Okay, and that was for what?
It was for help to get into my home, the home I'm in.
Okay. And you say your husband is currently in Mexico?
We're separated, we're not, we haven't been together for three years.
And obviously, this was assistance that you did receive, and it sounds like at some point in time, you're hoping to get yourself gainfully employed in the medical field. Is there any reason that if this was put in abeyance for a period of time, that once you become gainfully employed, you couldn't pay it?
There should be no reason why I couldn't, yes.
And so, did you get called from the collection agency, is that what it was?
Actually, no. I'm going through a lawyer to file bankruptcy, and my mother's actually doing that for me financially, and he brought that to my attention for liens and judgments against your name. Because I never knew you could come here and do what I'm doing. He actually sent me down here.
Obviously, this is owed to all the taxpayers, and so I don't believe this comes off with a bankruptcy filing.
There's been a previous ruling that we relied on in the past that part relief liens, if that's what we're talking about, are not dischargeable in bankruptcy.
Okay. I guess for me, and I don't know where the rest of the board is on this, I would not be inclined to release the lien, but to encourage you to continue with your education and hope they pay this at some point in time in the future.
Don, I think that was probably a motion, but would you add to it that we not turn this over to the collecting agency and we?
That would be my motion, that we don't turn it over to the collection agency.
Okay.
But keep in mind that when you do get the job, and it's not that big of a lien, but it's something you could clear out.
I'd second that motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have a second lien. Is there someone here representing that lien?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to deny the lien release request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to deny the lien release request. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item of business is the contract award for the Pennington County Campus Expansion Project. Do we have someone here to make that presentation?
Well, Mike and Mike are supposed to be here.
Maybe we should just cancel it.
We're too speedy for him.
We're moving along pretty fast today. It's too early for a break. No.
We could do item 16.
I could take up some time if you want to start.
You what?
I said I could take up some time if you want to start with the bid awards for highway.
Well, I'm not sure whether our attorney who's left the room would approve of that deviation from the agenda.
He's on his way, so I don't know if you want to wait for him to get here, or if you want to move to another man and come back to your choice.
If our auditor is ready, we will, with the consent of the board, move to item 16, which is the Pennington County Budget Discussion. Are you prepared to do that, Julie? We're moving to item 16.
This is the first discussion of the 2013 budget with CPI and new growth figures. I sent those out later last week. Have you all, did you all get that? Okay, good. The state has notified us that the CPI will be set at the maximum under statute of 3%. The actual cost of living for last year was 3.6%, but the statute limits it at 3%. Shannon Hanny's staff did well picking up growth for the year. The total factored growth was 223 million, with TIFs picking up 43 million of that. So that leaves Pennington County's usable growth at 2.75% or $180 million this year. Of course, the figure could decrease somewhat with county, city, and state board adjustments, as well as any dissolved TIFs or incurred TIFs new for the, up until when we freeze the books on August 1st. Combining the 2.75 and the state authorized CPA gives us an additional $1.8 million for use in growing the budget to support the services we will be providing in 2013. And as an additional note, just to keep the board informed, as you recall, the county did not use its CPI or growth dollars last year, however, the usage of the CPI carries for over three years, but the tax dollar gain on growth dollars has been lost forever. The board's information combining CPI last year, this year's, and our growth would give you an additional $667,000 or 2.4493. So the board has the choice of using anywhere from 0 to 2.4 of that for growth in the budget, just for the board's information. I believe you indicated you weren't going to use that growth from last, or the CPI from last year, but I felt it was my responsibility to give you that information.
Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Does this require any action on the part of the board, or just acknowledge the receipt of the information?
Just receipt of the information so that you can start your budget discussions on whatever you want to do for the, I believe it's on the 20th, for you to start setting goals.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. KJ will do the supplements.
I think Mike is.
We'll go to the items from the auditor, and it is.
Good morning, KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. Make sure we have, which one's first? The first budget supplement is a request from the Buildings and Grounds Department for a supplement in the amount of $13,203. This was insurance proceeds that were received in conjunction with the fire on the, it was last fall, that resulted in the needed repairs of the jail annex generator. And so, the work's now been completed, the expenses that were actually incurred in 2012, the insurance money's been received, so that money goes into the budget to support the non-budgeted expense.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the commission, from the public? Any comments on this item? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the supplement to the 2012 General Fund Building and Grounds Budget in the amount of $13,203 from insurance proceeds received in the current year, and that's to reimburse the building and grounds for money spent out of their account to refurbish your generator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the supplement to Buildings and Grounds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The second supplement is from the Weed Department. It pertains to the purchase of a vehicle off the state bid list. It was initially ordered in 2011, and the receipt of the truck was delayed until just about a week or so ago, I believe. So subsequently, the money was not spent in the 2011 budget, remained there, and went back to the ending fund balance, and so we're now supplementing 2012 with the assigned fund balance. Unassigned, I'm sorry. Got to get used to these new words. At the end of the year, because that was non-spent, it rolled right into what was basically non-spent.
Thank you.
Scott's here, if you have any questions on that one, too.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Scott, maybe you can answer this. It says here that we ordered a vehicle in 2011, and it didn't come in until 2012. Did we wind up with a 2011 vehicle or a 2012 vehicle?
No, it's a 2012, and that happens when you order off state bid. They actually have to, the vehicle isn't made, so they have to call and get the vehicle made, and by the time we go through our process, you know, I don't think I placed the order till the first part of December, so it takes two to three months before they finally get the vehicle out here.
But we did get a 2012 vehicle.
Yeah.
We're not a year behind already in $3,000 appreciation?
No. Okay.
Any further comments? Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the supplement to the 2012 General Fund Weed Budget in the amount of $22,217 from unassigned fund balance.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion from the commission, from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, KJ.
Thank you.
Next item is the.
We got the contract people here.
Oh, okay, we will then move back to item 15, which is the contract award for the Pennington County Campus Expansion Project.
Good morning. I apologize for my tardiness. Thursday, we had the bid opening for the Pennington County Expansion Project. As you are all aware, we had some interesting things happen that have never happened at a bid opening before, so those are things that we'll look to see if there's ways that we can modify our procedures to make certain that there is always an understanding what people need to do. But it was clearly spelled out in the documents in regard to how all the bidders were supposed to submit their bids, so there really shouldn't have been any question if they had been to the building prior to the bid opening and looked into what they needed to do to submit their bids. There shouldn't have been any question. Our bids range from $22,600,000 to $26,105,000, with our two lowest bids only had a spread of $114,000 difference, or 0.5%. So it appears we have a good set of bid documents, and we have a good number. The low bid was Jay Skull Construction, and their number, $22,600,000, was underneath the final estimates and below, actually going back to earlier estimates in design development as well. So we are underneath our estimated project budgets for it at this time, so we are in good shape from that standpoint. There were five alternates in the bid documents. The design team has suggested that we go with two of the alternates, four and, excuse me, three and four. These are alternates in terms of the type of piping used for domestic water and heating and cooling, and they result in a deduct from that overall bid number of about $91,000. At this time, Jay Skull Construction of Rapp City is the low bidder. There's no apparent reason to think that they won't be a responsible contractor. So based on our design team's review of the documents, they believe that all the requirements according to bid documents and the bid laws of the state of South Dakota have been met. So they are recommending that we award a contract to Jay Skull Construction. I have a, if there aren't any question, I have a motion that I'd like to suggest.
Are there any questions? Silence means there are no questions.
My suggested motion is to award a contract to Jay Skull Construction for the Pennington County Campus Expansion Project, and accept alternates four and five for a contract value of $22,506,000, and to authorize the chairperson's signature to contracts once they are prepared.
Is there someone to make that motion? Commissioner Holloway.
Excuse me, three and four. I apologize.
Okay, I would make that motion.
All right.
In that motion is to authorize the chairperson's signature on the contract?
Correct. No, I'll second it.
Motion and a second to authorize the signature of the contract as stated. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Davis is going to another commitment. We will proceed.
All right, thank you.
Next item is item 18, the Healthcare Trust Board.
Good morning, Nick Stroot, Human Resource Director for Pennington County. I'm here representing the Healthcare Trust Board on this issue. In your packet was a letter that I had drafted, kind of explaining what we're asking today. We're asking, I'm calling it a request for reconsideration. On December 20th of 2011, this board passed a motion allowing whole life insurance to be made available through payroll deductions for Pennington County employees. At that time, through some discussions between KJ and myself, we thought it would save the Healthcare Trust Board some time if we put this out to RFP to avoid having other companies come in and make us offers after the fact. Well, upon further review and talking with first administrators, who's our third-party administrator, it's brought to our attention that if we wanted to make this a fair RFP, we would have to write the language exactly as it is offered through Boston Mutual, and we don't feel that we have the expertise ourselves to do that. And then we inquired about how much that would cost, and we were told approximately $30,000. And given the financial condition of our Healthcare Trust Board, we didn't feel this was a wise use of our funds. So the motion that I have requested is at the bottom, that we allow Boston Mutual to offer Pennington County employees whole life insurance to be made available through payroll deduction, which was the original motion passed by you before we asked for reconsideration on that.
Any discussion?
Just for my clarity, I guess, the motion that was actually passed in December was to prepare a request for proposal, it wasn't to offer this insurance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't want to speak for what your intent was at the beginning, but we had put out the survey, the survey came back positive, 57% or so of the respondents said that they were interested, and then we asked, instead of just allowing Boston Mutual, which was kind of the intent from the beginning when it was brought back from the County Commission Association meetings, we asked for an RFP to be put out instead of just allowing it to go to Boston Mutual. And I guess we were a little naive on that process, and so after we learned more about the process of either A, writing a RFP, or B, putting one out and having it written for us, neither of those options seemed viable, so.
So do you think that more insurance companies are going to come forward now and want to offer this same kind of a service?
Well, we have, and we think that they might, but we need to internally create a system in the Healthcare Trust Board on how we need to handle that. Rather than putting out RFPs for everything, seeing how much they cost, we need to create a mechanism or a system to allow people to come and present to us, but still allow us to do the business of the Healthcare Trust Board. We're thinking about maybe once a year, once every other year, opening it up for a month, say January every other year, anybody can come and present to us, and we can, you know, poll employees, so, but that's something we need to come up with internally on how to handle that, to allow people to come and present some of the things that might benefit Pennington County employees, but not have people come to every meeting. Because some of these presentations can be, you know, 15, 20, 30 minutes, and if you have multiple meetings, or multiple presentations at a meeting, it just drags out the meeting and all of these people that serve on it are serving voluntarily, and they do have full-time jobs with the county, so.
As we add more insurance companies that are offering these types of services and doing it through a payroll deduction, does that increase any cost or expense at the auditor's office in separating that and making those different payments?
I'll let KJ answer that.
Whenever you have a new payroll deduction initially, it takes up some time because there's the presentations to the employees and gathering of information, especially when it comes to statistics when we're talking about insurance. That was kind of one of the reasons why we did what we did back in December. Once it's set up, you know, it's minute.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
So what we'll be doing then, I guess, is we'll.
So, what we'll be doing then, I guess, is we'll be allowing Boston Mutual to come in during working hours and allow them to talk to our employees. Is that what we're...
And again, I think that would be something where I would need to discuss with the people from Boston Mutual and need to discuss with you guys and I needed to talk with the department heads. And I'm thinking this Thursday's department head meeting would be a good time on how we want to do that. There was some discussion internally with the Healthcare Trust Board and some of the department heads that sit on that represent some of the bigger groups of employees like Heiney from Highway and Sheriff Tome. And we want to figure out how we can best present this, keep the time minimal, but still allow people to have this option if it is something they want payroll deducted.
And, and just so it's clear, this is not a benefit that the county will pay for. It is totally come...
No. All we're, all we're doing on this is allowing the employees the opportunity to have this payroll deducted so they don't have to write a check every month. If they elect to do this, it's totally paid for by themselves. County doesn't pay anything. The only benefit that the employees get is, again, it's payroll deducted, so it's just automatically taken out of their check. And they do receive, you know, you were here for the Boston Mutual presentation, they do receive the benefit of the lower rates because of the, they, they claim 600 counties that they represent. So, there's some economy of scale there.
I, I have a comment or a question.
Okay.
The, one of the driving forces in this seems to be the automatic deduction of the premiums. And within the scope of business practices today, you can have your light bill and different bills electronically deducted from your bank account. And provides the same convenience, if you want to call it that. And I, I guess I'm puzzling over why if an employee wants life insurance, they can't make that arrangement with a life insurance company of their own choosing and leave it out of the system of government bookkeeping.
And that's a fair point. I, when this was put up to a, I, I was asked by this board to conduct a survey. A survey was conducted and presented to you guys. And when that survey came back favorable, I believe the consensus was to allow this to be used as a payroll deduction. I, I think you have a valid point. However, that's what we did. We, we asked the survey, the one survey question of all the employees, was, is this something that you would be interested in? They came back and said yes. And so...
Yeah, and, you know, and I understand that and I, I don't mean to be debating with you, but, but if a process like this seems to have a, sort of a rolling demand with other companies coming to your board over time, making the same offer or looking for that business, looks to me like it would compound itself to a point that you might be looking at alternatives.
And I think that's a good point. We, as a Healthcare Trust Board, we realize that we don't have unlimited funds like maybe some companies do to offer benefits. So, we look really hard to try to find some of these benefits that don't cost the county or the taxpayers anything, but maybe can benefit an, you know, an employee and their family. And if we can facilitate that through payroll deduction, I think that's what we, that's where we can step in and we might not be able, the county might not be putting any money into it, but we are offering the convenience of that.
And the cost of processing?
And the cost of processing.
Yeah. So, what's your wish?
If I could just follow up a question as it relates to that. When, when Boston Mutual presented this, they presented it wanting it to be payroll deducted.
Correct.
And, and, and in fact, the State County Commission Association gets a cut on this premium.
And that part I'm not fully, but yeah.
Isn't that what the presentation was?
Yeah.
So, I think that's a fact. And the other thing is, I, I think if we told Boston Mutual, "You, you make your own deal with the individual employees and they can pay you directly with a check every month or take it out of their bank account," they probably wouldn't, they, they wouldn't pursue So, I mean, when we open up the, the door for this with Boston Mutual, I think we open up the door for other, other ones that want to come in with the same benefit. Because if you take it away from somebody before they put it in their bank account, then they're more apt to not appreciate how much they're paying, just like their federal income tax.
Exactly. There are other members of the Healthcare Trust Board here. I'm not the only one. So, if they have any comment, I would certainly invite them up.
I guess I, I would just agree with Commissioner Holloway that the way I understand the presentation from Boston Mutual, it's encompassed of a large number of counties in the state and a, and even in, I think I remember seven other states or maybe a total of seven states. And, and part of the, the proposal on that was that it would be payroll deducted. I do not believe that they would come in and do the, the offering of the premium rates based on this large consensus of government employees in the state of South Dakota and many other counties outside and set it, be willing to set it up in any kind of, of a deduction format that would come from their bank. Because part of the whole key to this is, you know, if I did elect to purchase this whole life product today as an active employee of Pennington County and continued to purchase that until, oh yeah, that day when retirement comes, or an employee quits and moves on, the, the, the premium rate that they have as this county employee doesn't travel with them to wherever they go from here.
Goes up.
If it's portable at all, and I'm not sure if the, what the answer to that question is.
I guess I'd make the motion to allow Boston Mutual to offer Pennington County employees' whole life insurance to be made available through payroll deduction.
I'm going to second that, but I certainly had some reservations about it.
Oh, I do too.
I guess the only thing, if you could tweak your motion with the guidelines that, that the Healthcare Trust Board establish, establishes, 57% of the employees were interested, but there's 48% that weren't. And I guess, I know Boston Mutual, they want to talk to everybody. And I got employees that aren't interested. And I don't, if I provide them time to talk, why should I force all my employees to sit through the presentation? So, I guess that, I would like to see that if I have half my employees that don't want to sit there, why should they have to sit through a presentation? And I know the big selling point for Boston Mutual was, this is a group, so if there's an employee out there that has a disease or a bad, bad health right now, they're not going to look at it because they're bringing the whole group in. So, if somebody did have some, some health issues out there, that they wouldn't have to do a physical or anything. But I guess I just don't want to force all my employees to sit through a presentation they're not interested in, so.
I don't think my motion said you had to force them to go.
Okay.
We're offering it.
That we had offered.
So, if they don't want to take the offer, I guess they don't have...
I guess I would...
And that's, excuse me, that's what I wanted to talk to the commissioners and the department heads, preferably at this Thursday's meeting, is try to figure out something that would be acceptable to everybody. And like Heiney says, the consensus, at least among the department heads that sit in the Healthcare Trust Board, is we wouldn't force anyone who is absolutely not interested to sit through a presentation. It might just be a waste of time, so. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. I, I vote no.
So, does that pass in a little too?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next item, item 19, from Health and Human Services. Do we have someone here for that?
Karen's standing outside.
Good morning. Hey. You're gonna, I'm just going to do a real short presentation, just so you kind of know where the Crisis Care Center is and what we're doing, just so that you kind of know what you're investing in. If we can get logged on. Can you log us on? [laughing].
There it goes. Gosh, they do it.
Best laid-out plans.
Okay.
We need, we need a, a little comedian needs to sit down and, now that we've allocated this money.
And look at what we're going to do.
Yeah. And here's how much we need to set aside of this project. What have we got left?
I agree.
And then designate that.
Yeah, we need to, I mean, that's the purpose is going to be.
Yeah, and then, and then I think bring it back to the board and have some discussions with these other...
I just need to open the flash.
I brought it. Yes. Well, this is my CD of the presentations I made when we did this. You know, I don't know if they've seen it. And this is pretty interesting. Kind of makes you appreciate them.
All right. Sorry, sorry for, sorry for the delay. I just wanted to kind of recap the Crisis Care Center and why we actually began the Crisis Care Center. And I just have some quick slides where you hear, where it started in 1995, the state statute actually changed the process of how we did involuntary commitments, allowing our licensed physicians at the ED to actually put an involuntary hold on, on our individuals. This is, this was quite new. I think we're one of the only states actually that actually has, have given this authority to our emergency doctors. But you can show what this represents is, is the number of QMHP, which is Qualified Mental Health Professional Evaluations that we did on emergency commitment. So, you can kind of see how that number grew from 1995 to the 2010. We don't have the 2011. And this is just the, the QMHP search as all. This kind of shows how, when we started the Crisis Care Center, we knew that from the time that, in 1995, when the state statute changed, we could see that there was a continuous growth. And we knew that we had to change several years, 16 years of the same thinking, that everyone had to go through the emergency room via either the ambulance or law enforcement or self-commitment. And that was actually really the only place that people could be served with an involuntary commitment. Prior to that, they were actually being served in jail. So, we actually changed that around 1992. But anyway, this, again, just kind of shows the growth of our involuntary mental health commitments. During that time, about 2000 and, what'd you say?
2002.
2002. We actually started, this doesn't actually show how we actually stabilized the budget, even though our numbers were going up. We actually stabilized the budget with just some of the really proactive approaches that we took with the involuntary commitments, with finding alternative resources, hiring our own QMHP, doing a contract under that. Instead of having people stay in the hospital for three or four days waiting for a discharge or, or a board discharge, we were actually getting them out of the hospital sooner. However, we pretty much in about 2009, 2010, we pretty much stabilized that budget and knew that we had to take a different look. And so, that's when we started looking at the number of, of less than 24-hour commitments that were actually driving this number up, which this is what this shows. This graph here shows, when we approached the board in 2010, we were actually, our goal for the Crisis Care Center was that we would reduce the involuntary mental health commitments less than 24 to 40%. We knew that was, that was a, was going to be a long reach. It was not going to be achieved in the first year. We knew that we had to change a lot of thinking, like I said, at least 16 years of thinking of how we had done things in the future. But we knew that that was a goal that we were trying to achieve. What we've done, just, and Jay might, Jay would definitely be of, of help here. What we found is that even though we had quite a, quite a number of people actually going to the Crisis Care Center, which I'll show in a later slide, this trend was still going up and we weren't reaching our goal of, of the 40%. So, we were still making an impact and saving the county money, but not to the extent of where we want it, want to be. You can see now in January of 2011 that we're at 39%. So, we're, we're starting to reach our goal. That hasn't come easy and hasn't come with, without a lot of hard work. And I actually have to really thank Jay for a lot of this hard work. His work tirelessly with the Mental Health Director of the Emergency Room and the Crisis Care Center. Our Mental Health Chairperson was very instrumental in this, but we had to kind of change behaviors and thought process. We had to make sure, reassure the emergency room doctors that they were comfortable and okay with actually sending people over to the Crisis Care Center versus admitting them into the, the hospital, which we certainly, even though it was kind of frustrating because we wanted our numbers to go down, we can certainly appreciate that and understand that because that's what we would want for ourselves or for our loved ones. So, we, we understood the process and this has been about a year process that Jay has been working with. So we understood the process, and this has been bought a year process that Jay has been working with, with the emergency room doctors, creating a special form that we developed that soon, I think, will be into policy. And also then, in, I think it was December of two thousand and eleven, we actually certified all the emergency room doctors as qualified mental health professionals. What this did was give them immunity, just like our contracted qualified mental health professionals did. That gave them the immunity, and so that put a little less pressure off of them, and for them to feel comfortable with transporting people actually to the Crisis Care Center. And there was a whole, multiple discussions and hours and hours of talk of how the people would get from the crisis, to the...from the emergency room to the Crisis Care Center, and how this form would be used versus the traditional petition and certification. So it's been a process. It's been a work. The one thing about it is, is it's been...what it has done for the Crisis Care Center, however, is that the numbers, we would like to see those numbers almost double going to the Crisis Care Center, which is kind of gave them some challenges for this year, because the revenue hasn't come in. Because we're...we don't have the number of people that we want to come through. They're not getting the revenue that they would like to see. However, we think that that's going to be a process, and we're hoping to see a change about in June, where those numbers are going to flip-flop and that revenue number is going to be going up. This, of course, is going to create another issue for us, that if the numbers do double, which that's what we are anticipating, the space is going to become a huge issue, because right now there are only four beds. And to be able to double that number is going to be a major issue for the Crisis Care Center to come. Did you want to add anything, Jay, to that?
I think you've done an awesome job.
Okay. As you know, this is actually the number of visits to the Crisis Care Center, averaging about sixty, sixty per month. We had a very slow start, starting, I think it was January thirty-first, is what we started with. And so we're getting those numbers up, but again, we want to see them double. When...last year, when I came before the board and I asked for the additional supplement to go into the Crisis Care Center, I also asked approval that we would be the...we would actually do the case management services for the Crisis Care Center. I felt that one county had the most invested to do the case management. It required intensive case management services. These were people that were in crisis. It needed to have immediate intervention. And I felt that our office was well-equipped to do that, and that we were engaged in that. So what that shows is that about a third of the people are actually going...are being referred to case management services. What we started doing in December is actually showing the number of people that were referred and the number of people that we were carrying over. So, one would maybe look at that and say, "Well, twenty people for a case manager, that doesn't seem to be too bad or overwhelming," although twenty people of intensive case management is. But not only are they seeing twenty new people, we're also carrying people over each month that we're trying to do a warm handoff to other services, because we're not meant to do long-term case management services. What we're trying to...our job is to do intensive transitional case management services and do a warm handoff into the community. What we've done here is we've tracked our referrals to the community agencies and what we're moving into, and you're going to hear this term more and more. And what we're going to be turning to within this community is a whole change of system, which is called Systems of Care, and it's a community case management approach. What we have found is that when we're working with people, especially in crisis or non-crisis, that what we need to do is have a Systems of Care approach within our community. Instead of one person going to fourteen different agencies and exhausting fourteen different resources and time, what we're doing is coming together, and the Crisis Care Center is actually doing this and having bi-monthly case management meetings, we're actually taking those fourteen agencies and focusing on that one person. So we're not using the resources of fourteen agencies, but we're using the resources of one primary agency and fourteen people that are actually talking together to try to move this person through the system and get them stabilized. This actually shows the people that we actually have referred to out within the community from our transitional case management. This is, again, is just kind of a breakdown of coordinating services with individuals. We have found that a lot of times people are in crisis because they need to be connected to another mental health facility. Could be something as simple as getting them reconnected to Social Security to get their Social Security. It could be getting medication. It could be getting a driver's license because they can't get that. So, we're basically...we're just giving them to the resources so that they can become independent. And again, this is just the breakdown as far as the case manager and what...how many contacts that they have actually had with those individuals that we've been serving, and it just breaks down the activity of those individuals. This, it's been so hard for us to say, "What is the cost of an average involuntary mental health petition?" So what we've done here is, we've actually taken the cost from two thousand and eleven, and we've divided that out among those people that actually were inpatient and went into inpatient services. And what we did is we came up with this average cost of the petition. Now, within that, there could be some out of county petitions that were done, where we could have gotten some reimbursement back. But it also does not include those services that are provided by the public defender and the state's attorney. So it's been...and the court services. So it's been so very difficult for us to try to put a figure on it. So, if we wanted to just look at this figure, kind of as a raw figure, that is the average cost of the petition without those court services. But what we wanted to do for you and for the purposes of the steering committee is that we wanted to be conservative. And we wanted to just look at those individuals that were brought into the Crisis Care Center via law enforcement, very few self-referrals, but mostly through law enforcement, and some referrals from the emergency room, that would have traditionally actually gone to the emergency room and probably would have received a petition and certification and been released within twenty-four hours. So these...this is what this is showing, is those individuals that came into the Crisis Care Center, stayed twenty...less than twenty-three hours and fifty-nine minutes, and were released. I think it's a very conservative figure, but I really prefer to do the conservative until we could get a real good handle on what the actual cost of the petition is. But you can see that, just this year alone, that we can show that we can see a savings of three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the county for those diversions that went through the Crisis Care Center versus going through the emergency room and going through the involuntary mental health petition. We're hoping, again, like I say, that that number's going to double. In addition, what this actually really shows is that even though our numbers of involuntary and the need for mental health services was going up, we still diverted this many individuals. And some of that has contributed to the fact that we've had seventy...was it seventy-five? Fifty-five? Fifty-five law enforcement officers actually go through what is called the CIT training, Crisis Intervention Training. And that's been sponsored through the John T. Vicarvich Foundation. I know the sheriff's office has gone through, have had people gone through that, and as well as the police department. I know that Kevin's been very supportive of it. Brian Mueller's been very supportive of it. And we actually have sent people off to become trainers. So we actually have people that are now certified trainers. We're going to have another CIT training that's coming up, I believe, in March. The more people that we get out, the more first responders that we get this training to, the more we're going to see this number go up. So I think, even though we're maybe not where we want to be, I think we are headed in that direction. And I think for the first year, I think it's actually done a very good job. So I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on that. I don't know if you have any questions on...
Karen, so really, community referrals, like if families are dealing with someone in crisis, really, they would need to call law enforcement in order to get them into the Crisis Care Center?
We do have self-referrals. There are some self-referrals. But most generally, it does come through the law enforcement or through the emergency room, because families just are uncomfortable dealing with the mental health issues, don't really know how to deal with it. They call law enforcement, and usually that is how. But you can go through. There are some self-referrals. Those seem to be increasing. We...I just wanted to kind of bring up, too, that, I believe it was last month, we actually met with, I think it was over fifty individuals from law enforcement agencies throughout the Hills area, and actually informing them of the Crisis Care Center and what possibly they could do to start utilizing that, this service, not as a free service, but as a service to...alternative to go into the emergency room. So, and I know that, I think today, actually, we have three people that are in...is it Beaufe County?
Beaufe County at their commission.
Beaufe County at their commission meeting, actually, that is going and talking to them about the Crisis Care Center and doing a presentation similar to what I just did for you today.
Yes. Karen, the case management that goes along with this, the goal or the objective with that is to stop the revolving door, because I think in the past, we would see a number of these people who would go into the emergency room, to the psych unit, get released within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, go back to the same environment they were before, then come back and go through that whole cycle again. So, not only are you hoping that we'll be able to deal with them for a thousand dollars versus the twenty-three seventeen of going through the emergency room, but stop that recycling of the same ones. Have you got any statistics to show how successful that case management component has been?
You know, I can get those. I don't...
I'm sure you could.
But I can get those. I can get those for you. But it has been very successful. And what we have seen is that once we get people involved with the intensive case management, we kind of are doing that warm handoff, and we still stay in contact with that case manager, the primary case manager. We're seeing very few people coming back through the system.
Well, I just recall that before I left the sheriff's office, you were doing that case management for people coming out of the jail and to try to stop that recycling through the jail and recycling through the city kind of drug and alcohol program. And I know that that...you had statistics that showed that that was successful. So I'm sure we'll be seeing the same kind of thing, where you can make sure these people get the services they need so that they don't go right back into crisis again.
Yes, I can get that for you. We'll work on that.
Are you ready for the next agenda item?
Yes, yes. So, the goal of the Crisis Care Center reserve was a million dollars. And that was to sustain the Crisis Care Center through some temporary funding, some grant fundings, twenty-twelve funding, and to get us prepared for when those funds were no longer available. And so we had set up a goal of the million dollars, and so far, we've put in the five hundred thousand. And so I'm here today to just discuss, and asking your approval, to at minimum put in the additional two hundred and fifty thousand that would be supported from unspent and over-collected revenues from those budgets, which we targeted, that we felt that there would be a savings by the Crisis Care Center. The...what I am turning back can support additional monies, but I don't know if that would be the board's desire to do that or not. And one of the reasons I'm bringing that up is, about June of this year, I thought I would be coming before you to ask for a supplement versus actually turning money back. But that kind of shows how things can turn so fast within my office. Whereas one day you could be looking at a supplement, the next day at the end of the year, you could be turning money back. So, we have had a good year this year within a lot of our departments, with a lot of our budgets. But I didn't know if you would have the desire to have any discussion with that, or if you would just prefer to leave it at the two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Mr. Chair. Karen, if...the idea of establishing a one-million-dollar reserve was that, right now, part of the support to keep this Crisis Care Center going is coming through a grant that we had received. And, long-term, long-term, if the numbers get up and we start using the Crisis Care Center more successfully in the future, will the fees...do we feel that the fees that are being charged from...to Pennington County as well as other counties that have this responsibility, will that sustain the Crisis Care Center? Or are we always going to need to feed it a little bit out of the one million dollars or other funds?
I think we will always need to feed it somewhat, because there's still going to be, of course, depending upon how healthcare reform goes and if the increase in Medicaid, there's a lot of ifs out there. But there's still going to be that segment of people that are without insurance. And that's one of the reasons why they could not access mental health services and they get into a crisis. So, we're still going to have that, where there is no place to actually charge these services off. We do, at some point, really need to go to the legislature and start talking to them about if we could bill on case management services. But that will be...that's going to be two or three year down the road.
But currently, I guess, currently, we have a budget set aside for mental health services to cover those people that go in through the emergency room at the higher cost. And that's paid out of county general fund dollars. Will those, you know, will we be able to continue to pay for it that way? Or are we going to need this reserve long-term?
I guess that's a discussion that we would need to have, because I'm hoping that budget's going to continue to go down. And so, you know, would we need to continue to build the reserve? Or could we take money from those, you know, from that budget, you know, transferred over? I think it might be too soon to tell. I know this year is going to be difficult for the Crisis Care Center to be able to, I think, make their yearly budget. They're anticipating maybe a thirty thousand dollar shortage, just because the numbers aren't up. You know, they were anticipating that they were going to not be having an average of sixty individuals coming through, and they were hoping those numbers were going to be larger. And so they don't have that many people that they can bill services out to. So it's...I think eventually the goal is that that budget's going to go down. We may not need, you know...
So, if we have the thirty thousand dollar shortage that might occur this year, will that come then out of the half million dollars or the seven...if we put this other two fifty in the seven fifty? Is that where that would come from?
I would anticipate that they...that the...they may come to the board and ask for that, if that's how it turns out.
I see.
Because there's really no other place for them to get funding. And they feel okay about the following year, because there is a grant, the third year, there is a third-year grant. But this is...this was going to be the tough year. We knew the second year was going to be the tough year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? KJ or Julie, in terms of addressing this issue and making a decision on it today as it relates to our budget deliberations, is this premature or not?
Actually, this is the perfect time to do it, so that any reserve money you're going to set aside is not used in the next budget process. If we get much farther into the budget process, which we'll start with those at the next meeting, then we're almost required, if you will, to use any of those funds to apply to the next year's budget. So the easiest way to not apply them is to put them into this reserves. And she actually had the unspent budget, and we had more unspent budget than we estimated, and we had more over-collected revenues than we estimated. So this will not hurt our reserve balances, if done at this time. If we do it after we've used them, then, of course, it makes a reduction in the... If we do it after we've used them, then of course it, it makes a reduction in those.
Thank you. What's the issue with the commission?
If, if we did the five hundred thousand, Karen, then that would be it. That our goal was a million dollars to, to make sure that we had enough to deal with this. So then next year, the unspent monies, we, we wouldn't be asking for anything. We would be done with it at this point.
We would be done.
Where we have no guarantee that next year we'll have that much unspent.
I mean, next year I, I could end up in the same place with, with having this much, you know, unspent. But then.
You just don't know when something catastrophic medically is going to happen.
I, I just don't know. So, you know, I'm, whatever the board's wishes, I'm, you know, I'm fine with. I just brought it up for a discussion.
Actually, kind of segueing off of that, if you set up these special reserves or assign, assignments, the board at any time can change their mind on that. So if, if you're thinking between the two fifty and the five hundred thousand and you think, oh, what if she needs it next year? You can still consider taking it from that reserve or any of the reserves that you have set up except for the insurance one because that's just a false reserve, if that helps you any in your decision. Not that I'd recommend taking them, but it is, it is totally up to the board at any time. And you can only reserve them for so many months anyway.
Karen, and maybe you've told, told us this and I missed it. How, how much did you have in, in, in unspent budgets for two thousand and eleven?
The total is six hundred and ten thousand four hundred and twenty-two. Between, it'd be economic, jail, medical, medical investigations and the mental health and alcohol through the state's attorneys.
Karen, isn't that revenues and expenditures?
That's revenues and expenditures, yes.
So if we're going to set some of this aside in a reserve, do we have to specify which one of those funds it's coming out of? Okay, I would make a motion to, to allow two hundred and fifty thousand from the over collected revenue and unspent funds from Health and Human Services, Economic Assistance, Jail Medical Health and Human Services, Mental Health Investigation and the State's Attorney's Mental Health Investigation Budget to be placed in the Crisis Care Center General Fund Reserve.
Is there a second?
I think I'd rather just do it and get it over with. Just the five hundred. Because we don't know where we'll be at next year, but we know it.
Well, my, my reason for picking the two fifty is because we don't know what we're going to have for budget guidelines come the end of this year. So to, to take just about all of the money that is designated or that is left over and apply to this at this point in time, I guess I just feel a little uncomfortable with it, but.
But that, this is just your budget.
Excuse me. Do we have a second? If not, I will second the motion so we can discuss it.
Okay, sorry. But Julie, if I'm right on this, we still have other unspent budget from other departments. That'll be part of that reserve that we start with, right?
Yes. Just in over collected revenues, we had a little over a million. And you put about a hundred and twenty thousand of that away into this software reserve.
And ordinarily, when we bring our budget forward or the money from last, the previous year into the next year's budget, it's around five hundred thousand, isn't it? I, I can't remember if we have.
It, it has varied. Couple of years ago, we had a very low percent of over collected revenues that we hadn't used to supplement. And this year was, we were wealthy in our over collected revenues and we'll see if we can't get them a little bit tighter for next year. But this is the time you'll see those requests because we want to get them all set aside before we start budgeting so we know what we, so we have a pretty solid figure to come back to the board with. Does that answer your question?
It surely does.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Is there any comment from the public? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I want to do the five hundred. Because then we're done. We don't have to look for it next year. Wonder where we're going to get it.
Was your vote recorded yet?
It's no.
I think she's opposed. If you ask for opposed, I think she'll say yeah.
Okay. Any, any opposed?
Yes.
Motion failed. Thank you. Did you?
Motion failed?
What?
I'm no.
Which direction did you vote?
I, I voted yes.
Okay, so did I. So it passed then, doesn't it?
Doesn't it take three votes?
Oh, it takes three votes? Okay. What about that? One we voted on?
Yeah, that's what I. Yeah.
So if two out of three can pass it, then the motion that Nick was seeking passed also? Does he know that? Okay. Well, I learned something.
Discussion is always good.
Do you want to discuss item C?
Yes. With the potential of our office moving in the next couple of years, again, because we had some over collected and unspent revenue, again, this is for discussion purposes, if it would be prudent of, of me to put some funding aside in preparation of that move? Or should that all be absorbed under the, the building fund? I'm not real clear on that. I do know there would be some expenses such as a, a new phone system, a security system, moving, you know, our servers and furniture and type of things like that. But I just didn't know if that's something that I should begin preparing for versus a budget item? If a reserve should be set up for that or if that comes from the building fund?
Is this a discussion that could and should fall under your building committee? I certainly don't see us prepared to discuss it in detail today. And.
I, I guess my, my thought is, I, I think, and I don't know how late we can designate some of these before we do the, you know, before we get close to the two thousand and thirteen budget. But we just awarded the contract for this current project. We, we do have other bond money and obviously we got other building needs. And so I would, I would, I would think the building committee needs to take a look at what's left to be done and what funds we have available to do that. And if we need to then start establishing some of these reserves to help us get as far as we can possibly get with our, fulfilling our building needs, then we could, we would do that at a later time. Right now, I just don't know what, what the needs are. And I don't know what funds we still have available for sure, unobligated.
Well, of course, the board is just starting into their budget discussion. So we, we still have time before we, we finalize what we can and cannot. And it really will depend upon what the board, some of the board's decisions are for, for the budgeting for two thousand and thirteen and, and so I think we can just, you can just leave that in the back of your mind and, and we can make a decision about it, about it later, seeing which way the board wants to go.
I, I would think that when we, when, when the board starts setting those budget guidelines, whether that's going to be at the next commission meeting or sometime in April or whenever that period is, that might be the time to talk then also about.
Yes.
Here's what we got in bond money. Here's what we got in needs.
And that will give the building committee some time to set up and, and, you know, maybe come and make some recommendations to the board.
Because I do think it's a good idea periodically when we have unspent budgets and over collected revenues that we weren't counting on, that we, rather than just, rather than just throwing it back into the general fund, if we do, if we have some future needs that we can set money aside for to take care of these responsibilities without having to borrow money, we're, we're better off with that.
Yeah. Now, any expenses of moving into a new building, of course, could be covered by the bonds, but the more money you can set aside, then the farther down your master plan you can get. So it all helps.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand though was approved to move?
Nearly, nearly as I know.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I don't know if there's more discussion on, going on back there, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is items from the highway department.
Good morning again. We opened bids for our annual bids and I've given you a bid tabulation on our recommendation. And if you like, I can start going through them. The first project was an asphalt overlay project, two thousand and twelve dash one. It involves Sage Creek Road, Golf Course Road and Elm Springs Roads and all over in the eastern part of the county. The low bid was from Simon Contractors, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of one million fifty thousand three hundred, or one million fifty thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents. And we would recommend award to them.
Do we have any questions on the first bid, bid item?
So how do you want us to?
We have to go do the first, the first four, one, two, three, four, five, six projects with separate motions and then rest of the annual supplies we can do in one motion.
There's no discussion. The chair would entertain the motion.
I make a move to award the bid for asphalt concrete overlay project AC two thousand and twelve dash one, Sage Creek Road, Golf Course Road, Elm Springs Road for a total of one million fifty thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents to Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public?
Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is asphalt overlay project two thousand and twelve dash two. This is a Rapid Valley area. Numerous streets in, in the Rapid Valley area will be overlaid. Low bid was Simon Contractors of Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of three hundred and five thousand thirteen dollars. And that's our recommendation.
Any discussion?
Honey.
Yes.
All of these, all the funding for this is in your current two thousand and twelve budget, is that?
Correct.
I would make a motion to award to Simon Construction in the amount of three hundred and five thousand thirteen dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second to award the contract for the Rapid Valley area to Simon in the amount stated. Any further discussion? From the commission or the public? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is asphalt surface treatment project AST two thousand and twelve. This is chip seal, another word for it. The low bid was received from Jensen Rock and Sand out of Millbridge, South Dakota in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. And we would recommend award to Jensen Rock and Sand. They were the low bidder.
Any discussion by the board?
Have you used this company before?
No, I have not. This would be, will be a new experience. I haven't worked with that company. They were about thirty thousand dollars low, below the next bid, which was Hills Materials. And I have, we checked with the state of South Dakota. They are in good standing as far as their contractor license. So I guess I have no reason or I could throw the bid out.
I would make a motion to authorize awarding the contract to Jensen Rock and Sand Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand seven ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents.
There's a second. We have a second. Any discussion by the commission or the public? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is an aggregate stockpile, AGG two thousand and twelve dash one. It's a Robinson pit located east of town along Highway forty-four. The low bidder was Western Construction Incorporated of Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. And that is our recommendation.
Any discussion?
I move to award the aggregate stockpile project AGG two thousand and twelve dash one to Western Construction in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this item from the commission or the public? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is aggregate stockpile project AGG two thousand and twelve dash two. It's a Lower Spring Creek area. Low bid was from Western Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. And that is our recommendation.
I'd make the motion to award to Western Construction in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion in a second to approve the, to award, award the bid to Western Construction on Lower Spring Creek. Any discussion from the commission or the public? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is asphalt surface crack sealing project ASC two thousand and twelve. Various roads throughout Pennington County. Low bid was from Highway Improvement Incorporated, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, in the amount of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. And that is our recommendation.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the bid for surface crack sealing. Any discussion from the commission or the public? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next items could be done all in one motion. It's our annual supplies and we, we receive bids for aggregate materials, asphalt concrete composite, asphalt maintenance materials, concrete products, corrugated metal pipe, cutback and emulsified asphalt, deicing sand, equipment rental, fencing, guard rail, magnesium. deicing sand, equipment rental, fencing, guard rail, magnesium chloride solution, seeding, fertilizing, and mulching, timber bridge materials, and traffic control materials. And our recommendation is on each bid tab, and you could award all those in one motion.
Any questions, comments, as a commissioner?
So do you need to, um, read these, read these off, so we know, so the public knows who they're being awarded to, or?
Uh, yes, I think, uh, they'll award the annual supplies as recommended, and then she will list each one separately in the minutes.
Is there anybody in the audience who want to know who they are?
Anyone who wishes to have the annual supplies bidders enumerated or identified? If not, you can refer to the records. Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the recommendations for the annual supplies from the Highway Department.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the annual supplies bidding for the Highway Department. Does the secretary have enough information to complete the motion? Any comments from the commission or the public? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried.
Our next item is, uh, bridge rehabilitation projects, and I know my letter and my resolutions are fairly long-winded, but I, I'll try and explain as briefly as possible. Back in 2009, uh, we passed resolutions to, uh, repair two bridges. Uh, one was on, uh, uh, Neck York Road, and the other one's on, uh, Upper Spring Creek. Uh, they were placed in the STIP to be constructed in 2017, but those bridges needed repair. There's no way they would live that long, so, uh, we repaired them last year. Uh, in order not to lose our place on the schedule, on the STIP program, I'm substituting two other bridges on Thunderhead Falls that are in need of, of repair work. So, uh, what I've done, I've tried to explain to you that we have two on the list, and we don't want to lose our spot, so I'm substituting two other bridges to take those places, because if we pass the entirely new resolution without substituting, uh, it'd be 2021 before they could get on the list. So, uh, the first item is resolution 0306-2012, which spells out that we're going to, uh, substitute the two structures on Thunderhead Falls Road in place of, uh, the two we repaired last year. And then I've done a new resolution for bridge number 316-316, which is located on Thunderhead Falls Road. Uh, resolution, the next resolution is for bridge number 317-314 on Thunderhead Falls Road, and the last resolution is to remove the two we repaired last year, uh, from the statewide STIP program. So, if you want more detail, I'll go into it, but that's kind of an overview of what, uh, we're trying to accomplish today. And I would need a motion, uh, for each resolution, so it could be put in the record.
Perhaps I'm not following you closely, Honey, but, um, the, I see one sheet of paper.
Oh, you should have cover letter, and then resolution 0306-2012 is the next sheet.
Yeah, this, this one, 03, 0306-12.
Yep, that's the one. And then behind that, there's a resolution for, uh, a federal aid bridge replacement rehabilitation program resolution is the heading.
Okay, these, these are supporting.
Right.
Okay.
So I need a motion to approve resolution 0306-2012, would be the first one.
Okay.
If I could ask you.
Yes, please do.
Um, the bridges that you had to go ahead and fix ahead of time, and now are wanting to replace, uh, those on your list, uh, did we, was we able to use the federal share money to repair those ones that you, that you had to pull off and do ahead of time?
No.
So that, that was all?
Strictly local funding.
Okay, so the only way you get the federal money to, to replace these bridges is keep some on this list?
Yes.
And, um, and how did, how is that federal money designated?
Uh, well, in safety lieu, the federal act, fifteen percent of, of bridge funds spelled out in the act has to be spent on local roads, which is off-system bridges, so we can share in that, that fifteen percent, but it's, it's statewide, all sixty-six counties share with that pot of money. So, that's why our bridges are being pushed out so many years in the future, because that, the needs grow, and, and the funding doesn't in turn come from Congress, so, uh, in order to get a bridge to be replaced or rehabilitated on that list, it takes a number of years because of lack of funding.
And then what happened with these two was you just couldn't wait that long, so then you used local, local.
Correct. Yeah, we had, uh, well, last year, the concrete just fell out, out of the deck, and there was a hole in the road, and, and it had to be replaced, we just couldn't wait.
Sure.
And there's no guarantee that the Thunderhead Falls bridges will wait until 2017, it's just, we're hoping, but it's just such a delay, a lack of funding that, that we share in, so the sooner we can get our name on the list and get a bridge on the program, hopefully, and if Congress ever increases funding for, for bridges on, on, when they pass the new highway bill, that might help alleviate the backlog, but the, the way the current legislation is proposed is that Congress is going to do away with the fifteen percent set aside, they're going to give the money totally to the state, and then the state gets to decide if they will put it on the off-system bridges, so I've sent a couple letters to our congressional delegation already, saying we, we need the fifteen percent set aside, otherwise I'm afraid we won't get any of our bridges built with federal funds.
Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve of resolution 0306-2012 substituting project BRF 6220, PCE M O 2 E S, and project BRF 6654-01, PCE M O 2 E 2 E T, with the rehabilitation of bridge 52-316-316, and bridge 52-317-314.
That gets very.
No, trying to get it all.
Trying to get all the numbers put together, and as I put this resolution together, I just was no way around it, had to get the all the numbers in there.
Thank goodness I can read those numbers.
Yes.
There's a second to that motion? I'll second it.
Honey, what's, um, I mean, obviously, if, if people really do want to see the federal government balance their budget, quit spending more than they take in, things like this will have to go away, uh, and local government's going to have to take care of their local county roads. So what's your plan when that money goes away? Because frankly, I hope it does go away.
Well, we're going to have to start, uh, putting more money in reserves, so as these bridges come up, we'll be able to fund the replacement of them, that, I mean, it's going to have to be the local taxpayers, and then it will have to step up to the plate and, and cover the expenses, because most of these bridges are, are four hundred thousand plus to replace or repair, so, uh, it, it'd be a burden on the local governments, but, I mean, if the federal government doesn't pay, we'll have to, we'll have to take care of them, because I just can't see the county leaving an unsafe bridge out there, or closing a road, especially Thunderhead Falls. I mean, there's one way in, one way out, I'm, I still don't understand in my own mind how I'm going to replace those bridges and maintain traffic, because, uh, when we had the flood, it wiped them all out, and people were isolated, but this day and age with people needing to go to work, and it's very, uh, pristine area, and to go in and try and build a detour, and some of it would have to go across a private person's yard, these structures are going to be very difficult to replace, but.
So, so you're saying this is fifteen percent money, but when I look at your resolution here, it looks like the federal share is eighty percent, the county share is twenty percent?
Fifteen percent of, of, I don't know how many billions of dollars they set aside for bridges, but fifteen percent of what the state of South Dakota receives has to go to local bridges.
And then we.
And then we get eighty percent when we put a bridge on there. So it's an eighty-twenty split after that.
Any further discussion? Not, we have a motion in a second, any comments from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carried.
Next motion I would need then is to approve federal aid bridge replacement or rehabilitation program resolution for county and urban projects for bridge number 52316, 316, located, well, we don't need a description, do we? You need those in the minutes?
Someone care to make that motion?
I move to, um, approve the federal aid bridge replacement or rehabilitation program resolution for county and urban projects, and I'll leave the bridge numbers for you, Karen.
Second.
You, that motion approve both of them, and then she can just.
Well, can we do both?
Can we do both?
Mm-hmm.
And then we can just put the bridge number.
Then I would move to approve both of those resolutions for change.
The second applies, yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 And then the next motion I need is, uh, motion to approve federal aid surface transportation program delete resolutions for county and urban projects, and it's project BRF 6220 and BRF 6654-01. She'll get the rest of the numbers in there, I abbreviated that a little bit, so. Which removes the two we replay, we repaired last year from the program.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion in a second to identify the bridges that were deleted, already done. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Pose, none.
Next item is our 2013-2017 Transportation Improvement Plan, that's a long-range plan, and, uh, the MPO is, is waiting for this information, so it can be put in the, uh, part of it in the statewide STIP, anything that is in, within the MPO boundaries. We had, uh, unspent balance of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand last year in, in the highway, due to a good winter, and lack of overtime, we didn't have to spend, pay overtime too, and we also had eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, uh, of overcollected revenue due to the license plate fee increase that took effect in, uh, July of 2011, and then we sold five of our, uh, motor graders, uh, which contributed to all of that. Uh, and hopefully, uh, this additional funding we received is in reserves, and we'll be able to do the Sheridan Lake project in 2014 as one entire project, instead of splitting in two. And we will also be able to reconstruct a portion of Plateau Lane south of Twilight to Williams Street, and Resor Road north of Twilight to North Pitch, utilizing unorganized road funds. Uh, what I need, I'll need a motion to approve the long-range transportation plan, and then a motion to designate nine hundred and forty-two thousand in road and bridge reserves for future projects listed on the plan. Now, uh, some of the, the other items on the plan, of course, the Sheridan Lake Road I mentioned, uh, Deerfield Road also, in 2014, we plan on overlaying, uh, from the Tigerville Junction or the Mystic Road intersection out to the end of the asphalt, that overlay will be done in 2014. Uh, South Rochford Road is still in the list as 2015, uh, we're going to, uh, overlay a portion of 161st Avenue from New Underwood South in 2017. Uh, there's numerous structures on there, and then we, uh, plan on doing an overlay on Nemo Road in 2019 from, uh, nor, the county line, uh, south back to Palmer Road in that area. So that's kind of the, the major projects that are on this long-range plan, and I've identified funding to fund those projects. And this has been a ongoing process for the last ten years, we've been setting money aside, money aside to, to do these projects, and just, I guess I should have looked at, at that total number, but the projects on this long-range plan total thirty million dollars, and it's going to take us till 2020 to construct them all. So, it gives you an idea of, of what we're planning on doing, and, and, and a long-range plan that, that was one of the stipulations when I started work in 95, that I had to provide you with the long-range transportation plan.
Any discussion?
Um, Mr. Chair, I got a, a couple of, of questions. The, um, unspent balance of seven hundred and twenty-seven, two forty-four, how is that funded in the budget? Is that general fund, building, or, uh, road building funds, what?
The.
Seven twenty-seven.
Oh, the nine hundred and forty-two thousand?
Well, no, the seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars of unspent balance.
That is, uh, every year, I have dedicated revenue, which license plate funds, and then I have approximately two million in general fund dollars, uh, that goes into my budget, so that is what was unspent last year, so that.
But you don't know what the split would be between those two sources?
Well, I can tell you, once the commissioners approve the budget and put those general dollars into the road and bridge fund, they stay there, they can never move back into your general. And that was, that was legislation about ten or twelve years ago that, that the legislature did, because what was happening, a lot of the counties were raiding the road and bridge monies to pay for other things they needed in the county, and, and the roads and bridges just started going downhill, so state legislator said, once it's put in there, it stays in that budget.
So is the seven hundred and twenty-seven in the road and bridge fund now?
It was unspent.
Road and bridge.
It's in reserves right now.
So if we don't do anything with it, it just stays?
It just stays in reserves, but then you have to send the financial report into Pierre, and Pierre says, oh, man, look at all these reserves, uh, the county has, why are they asking for additional funds? But if we dedicate them to a certain project or projects, then the balance sheet looks, doesn't look as bad as.
So of the eight hundred and fifty-seven, nine hundred and twenty-nine. So of the 857,929, how much was the, I don't remember, I think you told us, but the motor graders, how much was that?
Oh, that was, they averaged 70,000 apiece and we sold five of them, 300 and 350 of that would have been from the, and plus we sold other surplus equipment too. I think it was right at 400,000 of, of surplus equipment. We sold at auction.
And that has to be dedicated to road and bridge?
Yes, it stays there. You trying to take money out of the road and bridge budget or what?
I think it's worth the, the discussion with your building needs out there.
Oh, okay.
That if there is any of this overspent money, it's worth the discussion to talk about whether or not some of this money could go towards your building.
Yes, it could. We, commissioners could decide to use some of the road and bridge reserves to fund the building project. Yes, that's doable.
Well, I don't quite understand. If the 727 is in road and bridge and it was unspent budget, and then you got 857,000 in overcollected revenues that is in road and bridge, then we come down here and you're asking for 942 to be in the road and bridge reserves for future projects. So where's the rest of that going there?
It, it's going to stay in reserves. I did not want to lock all of the reserves up to future projects. I wanted to leave some money in there for disaster or emergency. So it's not all tied up into the long-range planning so that if something did come up, if you wanted to fund the building, yeah, if you add those up, it adds up a little over a million. So I fudged a little bit and said, well, I don't want to dedicate it all. I want to leave some funds there in case of emergency or disaster.
If, if we designated, if we designate the 942, did I hear you earlier, either Julie or KJ, say that we could undesignate that and use it for something else if we wanted to?
It is restricted in the road and bridge fund, but you can undesignate it and use it for something else.
So we're just doing this to try to confuse the state auditors so they don't think we got too much money?
One of the things, one reason we started reserving these is, is yes, the state auditors. When we do budgeting, I'm, I'm required to do a cash surplus report by line item. You'll notice that in your budget packet. And the boards in the past have wanted the depart, the funds to not have an excess amount in undesignedated or unassigned money. It happened that the road and bridge was building and building and building and building. A reserve, yes, to do projects, but we hadn't actually designated it to do that, which then takes it out of that formula. So in essence, all it does is reduce your unreserved fund balance to put it in a reserve so that we know what he's going to spend that money on and it doesn't look like he's just hoarding money. And that's when we started applying it toward his five-range, long-range. We have 400, or excuse me, 4 million in that right now. So it, it is for the auditors, but it also designates to people that look at those documents that were not just accumulating money for no reason. But yes, you can change your mind at any time or you could set this all up for, for building at this time. Heine is correct, is once you move the money over from county general into that fund, it has to stay. You don't have to make that transfer. The only place the road and bridge fund gets tax money is from the general fund. It can't levy itself.
So if we, if we, with the, with what we've got here, this a little over a million dollars between unders, unspent and overcollected, we're, we're going to have in his reserves five, five and a half million dollars in there.
At least, yes. And then he has the unorganized road reserve. There's a lot of money in the road and bridge funds, but roads cost a lot of money.
And just, well, if I do Plateau and, and North Reservoir Road next year, which I intend to do when I, when I submit my budget for 2013, you're going to see a little over 3.5 million increase in my budget just for those two projects and it'll come out of reserves. And that's what's, like Sheridan Lake Road, we need to put two-plus million in that to construct that in a couple of years. And if we don't save money over an eight or 10-year period, you would, you'd have to approve a budget with a six, seven million increase in one year. And that's just not something I think the taxpayers would stand for. We basically have to save. So we have a long-range plan.
It's better use of funding. I, I just have that concern that maybe it might be worth looking at some of that.
And that was my intent. Once the bids come in and you awarded the bids for your complex and, and I was going to see what was in there, if they're going to salvage this, this old existing evidence building or not. Once I found out what all those decisions were, then I would probably come back to you and say, I want to supplement my budget out of reserves to put a building up in, in New Underwood. So, yeah, that, that's all in the, in our game plan, but we haven't arrived at, at all the possibilities yet to give you a good answer.
Yeah, we're kind of in between, aren't we?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion, two motions.
I make a motion to approve the 2013-2017 Transportation Improvement Plan for Pennington County.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the transportation plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion to designate the reserve?
I'll move to designate 942,000 in road and bridge reserves for future projects as listed on the 2013-2017 Transportation Improvement Plan for Pennington County.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
I, I forgot. How much do you anticipate coming in for 2012 off the license plate fees? You've gotten a chance on that?
It's one, it's over a million or right at a million is what I should say. That's what I projected for the 2012 budget. That's right. 900 and some thousand.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wheaton Pest.
Morning.
Good morning.
Ready to get your mountain pine beetle fill for today? Apologize, I haven't been given periodic updates of our project, but I've been a little busy for the past couple of months doing our data and our, answering landowner questions and being out in the field when I can, helping the crews, mark trees myself. We just finished up our surveys and I will, I've got a PowerPoint presentation that'll kind of go through our project and of what, where we're at so far. Okay. You approved this plan back in August. It was our, called the 2011-2012 Pine Beetle Fire Suppression Project. And it was a cooperative between Pennington County, Black Hills National Forest, South Dakota Department of Ag, Save Our Black Hills Coalition, and municipalities. This is the project area. And the red dots on there is actually the 2011 Pine Beetles aerial survey. So you can see Pennington County is pretty much in the heart of it. The project area covered a little over 5,000 acres. And that was a little over 130,000 acres of private land. Close to 400,000 acres of it was public land, mostly Black Hills National Forest. And then 70% of that is, not all that area was treed or forested, about 70% of it is evergreen forest. In the project, it called for private landowners to sign up, 10-acre blocks or greater. Could be individual landowner, groups of landowners, adjacent landowners could sign up, like subdivisions that were eligible. South Dakota Department of Ag Conservation and Forestry, they identified some priority areas throughout the Black Hills, including Pennington County. A little over 50,000 acres is what their responsibilities were, is where they were going to do their surveys. So where the county came in is we basically filled in the gap outside those priority areas. Direct mailing was mailed to landowners owning three acres or more. It was voluntary request to have your property surveyed. And they were surveyed according, as the request came in. And then kind of as we moved along, our, our preference was to get the properties at the higher elevation where the higher pine beetle populations were, to get those areas done first and then work our way to the lower elevation. So basically started west and worked our way east. Landowners with pine beetle infested trees were eligible for a 75% cost share. Cost share is based on incurred costs. Payments were made in order to the requests received as long as there's funding available. And I say incurred cost, some of the landowners were fortunate enough to get their, their pine beetle infested trees sold to the mill. So if, if they could get them sold to the mill, a lot of times that defrayed their costs so there wasn't any cost involved. Problem was their, you know, the poor economy, there isn't a lot of demand on, on lumber right now. And then with the sheer amount of pine beetle trees coming into the mills, they saturated pretty fast. So it was pretty limited on private landowners to get, could get those trees into the mill there. Like I said, 75% of the cost share was split, 50%. The county paid that 75% and then 25% was paid by Department of Ag. And then the other 25% was, was paid by the private landowner. We also did some selected 300-foot pine beetle buffers on adjacent, on Forest Service land adjacent to private landowners. And when we did that, they're eligible for $18 a tree to cut and chunk up to 200 trees. We kind of set a limit there. Department of Ag required a minimum of 20 trees to qualify for the cost share. And there's a cap limit there of $10,000 per landowner. Because some of these landowners have so many trees, they, we'd run through the money pretty fast. South Dakota Department of Ag Resource and Conservation and Forestry Division out of Rapid City here has served as the, the clearinghouse for the, the landowner sign up to participate in the program. And then they're also responsible for getting the follow-up information out. That follow-up, follow-up information was when we surveyed a, a property, not only did we mark it with red paint, but we also took a GPS location of where those trees were located. And then I would upload that information on an FTP site. Department of Ag would pull that information off and, and put together a map for the landowner along with information on how the program worked in a cost share form if they qualified. We worked with Black Hills National Forest on, they would issue a permit allowing the, the adjacent landowner to cut and chunk adjacent to their property. Then we also worked in cooperation with Mead County Wheaton Pest. They didn't have a whole lot of landowners sign up for their program, so they would come down and help us survey. And then we went up there and helped them survey and we would do the inventory and upload the inventory for them. So it worked out really good there. Here's the funding. You guys approved the, the Title III funds back in August. It was a total of 336,390. A portion of that was the new, the new Title III funds and part of it was the old Title III funds. And all our funding is being used for the pine beetle reimbursement that goes back to the, to the private landowners participating in the program. And then we also received a, that should be Title II, that second. It's Title II funds that the RAC allocated. And that was in the amount of a little over $61,000. And that basically paid for our costs of the labor, fuel, equipment, postage, and materials associated with the project. That paid for all our seasonal labor. The only county-level levied tax dollars used in this project was my salary and my crew leader's salary, which was already in the Wheaton Pest budget. And then also the South Dakota, state of South Dakota pitched in 25% on the reimbursement to the landowners. Here is an updated report where we're at on the project. This is actually more current than the one I put in your packets. I got, this was sent out Sunday, actually, Sunday afternoon. So you can actually see where Pennington County's acres have actually dropped down from the last, last report. And actually, I think they're giving us credit for more acres than we actually surveyed. I think they, some of those belong in what the state surveyed. But nevertheless, you can see Pennington County by far has the lion's share of infested trees that were surveyed and acres surveyed so far and landowners participating. So almost 57,000 acres surveyed with over 107,000 trees infested. Look at this, the remaining landowners, I, I, some of those have been taken care of and I think some of those were duplicates. And then also, some of it was within the city or city limits of Rapid City. And when the city started their program back in, I think, January here, we pretty much shifted all those landowners to the city program. Cost share, you can see we haven't spent a whole, whole lot yet, but it's human nature to wait till the last second. And the deadline to cut and chunk was March 1st, set by the state of South Dakota. And that's kind of a soft deadline. I know there's, some people are still out there working on it. But so far, 37 landowners have submitted invoices for reimbursement. A little over 7,000 trees, $96,000. We're getting billed monthly on our portion on this. How it works is the state pays that reimbursement. They keep track of it and then they bill us the 50%, our share that we said we would participate in it. And I know our, our invoice for January was $35,000. And I think that's just the tip of the iceberg. I think you're going to see a lot more reimbursements come in. And we've just had a few of those $10,000 capped out reimbursements, but I know there's, there's quite a few of them sitting out there waiting to come in, so. In addition to the, the state program on the private lands that we participated with in our agreement, we did additional, found a, we marked an additional little over 3,000 trees on the Forest Service buffers. We did all this with a six-member crew, including myself. Roughly 3,000 hours spent on the project, a little over 5,000 miles. We averaged about 13 acres an hour on our survey, but up in the heaviest infested areas up there by the Hill City, Rochford area, it was more like an acre an hour per person, so. And then our numbers, it came out to about a, one pine beetle tree per acre overall, but some of those properties up in Hill City in that area that's heavy infested, they were at 60 to 70 trees to the acre, so where the highest infestation is. And we surveyed roughly over 300 landowners. This is the map of, the pink is our project area. And then the- And then the dots on there are where we found, where we GPS'd the infested trees on the people that signed up in our survey. And I kind of broke it out, one to four trees I don't get real excited about. That's generally an endemic population. And we saw a lot of that, you know, single tree hits. And then they're not going to spread as fast as once you get into your higher clusters, like your five to ten trees, your eleven to twelve trees, or your twenty or over trees. And looking at, you can see where the, you can kind of see where our heaviest infestation is. I mean, it's kind of in the central part of the hills there, east of three eighty-five. Once you get over east here, we didn't survey a whole lot of properties, but we kind of saw it start to drop. Once you get to the Wyoming line, there is a little, I guess there is a little bit outbreak on Forest Service right on the Wyoming line. But as far as the private lands, it looked pretty good on the far western edge. But kind of that central part is the heaviest infestation. Once we got east of three eighty-five, down towards lower elevations, the foothills, we really saw the populations drop. It was just a lot of single tree hits. Had a few outbreaks that we found. One in particular up here was, was up here on Norris Peak Road on Gary Boulevard. There's one landowner, she had like fifteen trees on like three acres. And then we looked over on the Forest Service and we found a pocket of like fifty trees there. So we worked on getting that buffer out because that can really stop a flare up right there. The blue here is the two thousand and eleven aerial survey. That's from aerial flights that are done in the fall. And then they go through and they basically just look at the dead red top trees. And it kind of correlates with our, with our ground data that we found on our ground surveys. And that central part of the county is the heaviest infested areas. There is a little blurb over here. And then, like I said, there is a little bit over here. And I've talked to the Wyoming State Forester and they're kind of concerned about that because it's starting to spill over onto the other, onto the Wyoming side there. I wanted to point out this property in particular, just to kind of show you what landowners are facing in the heaviest infested areas. This is up, this is actually Reynolds Prairie right here. Rochford Road coming down. I think this is Golden West Road. But anyways, Deerfield Lake is right down here. Anyways, this is a church camp. And actually, our Director of Ecualization, Shannon Rittberger, his family is part of this church camp. And he called me last May, it was April or May, to have, see if we could come out. They didn't sign up in the program, see if we could come out and survey that property. And so I was like, yeah, I can send a couple of guys out, take a look. I thought there might be a couple of hundred trees out there, so, well. And last year, we found, you know, over twenty-six hundred trees. And he tried to get a logger or somebody in there to take care of the trees. And it was, it was pretty late in the date, date to get anything done, so nothing got done. So we, he signed up for the program this year, so we went back in and surveyed it. And I think this is, what is it, a hundred and twenty acres, Shannon? Hundred and twenty acres. So we came back in there this year, it was in October, it was fairly early. And we found another, you know, over twenty-seven hundred trees. So they, combined, they got over twenty-five, or over five thousand dead trees, or will have over five thousand dead trees on there. But they tried to get a, you know, a logger in there to try to sell it to the mill. But what the mills have kind of declared this area is kind of a dead zone. And they don't want to take trees out there because, and I can't blame them. They, they kind of want to get on the leading edge of this thing where they're doing a little more good. But it just leaves landowners in this area in a tough spot. Because if you look at cutting and chunking, you're looking at, you're looking at fifty thousand dollars to cut and chunk that property. Our program caps out at ten thousand dollars. So the church would have to come up with forty thousand dollars to take care of that problem. So they've, they've basically thrown up their hands and are just letting Mother Nature take its course. And hopefully they'll have some trees left, but they're going to have a heck of a, of a fire danger and a, and a, and a safety aspect from falling trees and stuff. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Shannon, but I just wanted to make mention of, and the outline here is the aerial survey. So you can see this is all Forest Service around them. So even if they did do something there, they're just waiting to get inundated again the following year. We saw a lot of this, misidentification. There's just becoming a lot of mountain pine beetle experts all of a sudden. And this, this was actually out in Copper Oaks just past Bear Country. And they did sign up in the program, but this gentleman called, called me here, oh, it was a couple of weeks ago, and was wanting me to come out and survey his property. And what I've been telling people I didn't sign up is go through your property, kind of tell them what to look for, and if you have a specific tree you want us to come out and look at, we can. He said, well, my neighbor already had somebody come through and he's marked the trees with red X's and he found ten trees on my property. And I said, that's awful high for that area, according to our surveys, because we didn't find much of pine beetle activity in there. So I went out there and looked and these red X's are the trees at this. He didn't tell me who identified them, but it was, anyways, if you look at the, his neighbor had already started cutting trees. And if you look at that, you don't see any blue stain on that tree. That tree is perfectly fine. All these trees are perfectly fine except for one that was actually a legitimate hit. These were all old hits that survived. And we're seeing a lot of that at these lower elevations. Are these, these, you know, these bigger pines are able to withstand the hits. You know, you've got to remember, this is native pest. They've been here since the pine trees. So, you know, to cut these big trees down, this tree is probably, I don't know, eighty years old or so. To cut that down, I mean, it's, I mean, you can't put a value on that tree really because to try to replace it, you're not going to see it in your lifetime. So we're seeing quite a bit of that. Even tree companies coming out telling people, yeah, you got pine beetle hit trees, better cut them down. And I'd come out and look and they're, they're fine. So there's people out there trying to drum up business a little bit and also a little bit of hysteria going on with the, with the tree epidemic. This was, this was, I don't know if it was a state or county, but you can kind of see the pitch out marks. And then I just kind of show you this, you can see the blue stain on these trees. And when they're cut, if you, if you're not seeing that blue stain after you cut a tree down, you've just cut down a perfectly healthy tree. It hasn't been infested by the pine beetle. This is a property actually out in Nameless Cave Road, right at the bottom of Highway forty-four west before you start going up the hill. And we actually surveyed the neighbor's property here, but these people didn't sign up. And the, the Blue Ribbons are actually a spray company that's going to come in and spray these trees. But, you know, the spray company kind of looked at these trees and said, yeah, you got a couple of bug hit trees. And I said, well, let me come out. They called me then and I, I'll go, I'll come out and take a look. And actually hatched it in these trees to see if there's blue stain. And there was no blue stain, so if, just looking at the tree on a visual examination, it looks like a pine beetle infested tree, but it's actually been a pitch out. You can see the pitch outs here and there's actually some red, some rusty colored pitch outs that indicate infestation. But the, for whatever reason, we're seeing that these, these trees on the lower elevation are able to withstand the hits better. Simply because we don't have the sheer numbers down here at the lower elevation yet. Here's another look. You can see, you know, he's got some nice mature trees there. And he, to cut those trees down, I mean, it's, they don't want to lose their trees. I mean, they just got a few and they want to, they want to save them. So it's vital that we have proper identification. Here's some conclusions of what we found, or what I've drawn up through our, through our survey this year. Pine beetle epidemic isn't countywide yet. Like I said, from the map there, it's mainly that central portion of the county where it's the heaviest infested, infested. For the most part, dealing with endemic pine beetle populations at the lower elevation so far. Pine beetle eradication is not possible and shouldn't be. You know, like I said, this is a native pest. There is a reason why it's here. It's to keep our pine beet, pine trees in check. And to try to eradicate, like I said, if you misidentify, you've just, you just put yourself in a dangerous spot. And we're always going to have beetles coming in, so it's just not possible to eradicate. We need to be strategic in our future management practices. You know, doing this recon at the lower elevation was, was helpful to see where we stand on our, on our epidemic. And probably in the future, we probably don't need to spend as much time at these lower elevations until, until it's at the doorstep. Hopefully we can stop it before it gets there. And make sure we're properly identifying pine beetle infested trees. And I'll leave off anything question, I was pointing out this picture again. You can see where pine beetle came through, killed quite a few trees here, left a few. But then look at this canopy of jackpines coming in. And if we, if we don't manage these jackpines, whether it's fire or man going in there and thinning it out, we're going to be in the same boat here twenty to thirty, thirty years from now, so. Any questions on the project?
If I could, of the, I think you've got over a hundred thousand infested trees that you've identified. How many of them do you think will actually get cut out this year?
I hope at least a third, but you know, like I said, it's not mandatory. We're leaving up the landowners. And I know some of them are doing it on their own and not participating in the program. You know, if all, if the rest of those get cut out, you know, we're looking at, we've been averaging about fourteen dollars a tree on the cost share. So you're looking at one point four million if the rest of those get cut out. But it will be long out of money before we can reimburse all of them. But I would, I think last year we had, I'd have to look, but I think it was pretty high of the number of trees that got removed. Of course, we're dealing with a lot, larger scale this year. But I think it was like three quarters of the trees that got removed last year that were surveyed, probably over three quarters.
You don't have any system where the people are calling you once they've cleaned out or cut out?
Yeah, when they, when they get done, they submit their reimbursement form and their receipts. And then the state goes back and does a follow-up inspection, make sure they did what they said they'd done. And then, then they issue the checks, so the state's handling all the follow-up.
Any further comments or questions? We have several more pine beetle items that, do any of them take any action or?
There is a couple that require action. You want me to just move down the list here?
Yeah, if you could, and I think we'll kind of move as quickly as we can, please.
Item B is a Black Hills Mountain Pine Beetle Strategy Plan that I've been working on. And Nancy's been in the discussions with our, through our Conservation Leadership Committee. Basically what we did was through that Conservation Leadership Group, we designated a strategy working group that I was a part of that consisted of Black Hills National Forest, state, local, and industry reps to develop this plan. And if you read through the plan and kind of go to the back of the goals, we've, goals and objectives and actions, we kind of identified four goals of this kind of a five-year strategy plan. And kind of what the, the big thing it calls for is the formation of a pine beetle working group that would consist of all the active agencies that are out there doing pine beetle work right now. And then also a pine beetle coordinator to make sure everybody's working on the same page and we're utilizing our resources to the best of our abilities. But where the county can kind of play an action, play a role in that is goal one, reduce the pine beetle population to endemic levels. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, the strategic plan. Whether it runs out of gas or whether we can help run it out of gas. And then the other, the other part that the county can play a major role is, is the reduction of elevated fire, fire risk and the safety hazards with the following trees. I envision the county kind of filling in the gaps there where the federal and the state agencies have kind of set their management practices. And then we'll kind of come in and fill in the gaps where, where the management needs to be done. We're, we were hoping to bring this forward to you today for a signature, but the Forest Service wants to run it through their Forest Advisory Board and get their blessing on it and any input from them. And their Forest Advisory Board meets March twenty-first. So after they've kind of given their blessing to it, we'll probably have this back in front of you to have official sign off on it, so. Any questions on the strategy plan?
Mr. Chair, can I make some comments? I think sometimes when you go up in the hills and you look at the enormous problem and, and everybody thinks, well, what can we do? Well, you have to do some planning and you have to try to do something. That whatever we do is going to minimize the danger to people. And, and so I, I've been really enthusiastic about the planning process. Because it has, at least for Scott and I, when we've sat through some of those meetings, it's like, well, it gave us ideas as we listened to everybody talking about what's going on in their area and what they think they could do and their ideas for, for the future. It's helped Scott and I to come up with some pretty good thoughts, I think, for our county and how we can really make the most of our funding and our efforts. One of the things that probably most has been concerning to me is, is, is the safety issue around Hill City. And certainly we've got some ideas about how to deal with that. I think that our, this group of people that have come together all have a really strong commitment to making this become an endemic, rather than epidemic kind of situation, not only just for the next few years, but in the future, twenty years from now, if we can begin some good practices now. And I just think it's been a real worthwhile process. And even though you don't always agree, you have different objectives, what I've appreciated is that people still kept to the idea that we've got a problem we have to deal with. And I've been real thankful for that. And I really want to thank Scott. I've been really proud of him. I mean, he gets up and has presented and been very much a part of the writing of this draft. And that group of people have done a wonderful job and I want to thank you for that, Scott.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Are you ready for item C?
I am. This kind of correlates with the strategy plan. At your last meeting, you made a motion to direct Commissioner Troutman and myself to look at forming some type of pine beetle committee. And we sat down, we, we looked at who would be the key players, particularly at just the county level. And to make sure that the county's utilizing all our resources and our funding to the most efficient and maximum use possible. So we kind of sat down and we kind of said that core group should be a commissioner, obviously. And then also the Departments of Emergency Management, County Fire, Sheriff's Department, and then Wheaton Past. I've also spoken with the other departments, kind of gave them a heads up so they weren't blindsided today. And they were all willing to participate in such a formal working group. We've kind of had a loose one in the past. And then that core group would also reach out and utilize our state and federal partners and industry and whoever else we need to, and also other county departments. But we, we thought that core working group should be small to where it's, it's workable and we can get something done. And they'd be basically responsible for developing an annual pine beetle plan that would go in conjunction with the Black Hills Regional Strategy Plan annually.
What's the wish of the commission?
Well, I'd like to make a motion. Well, I'd like to make a motion to form a Pennington County Mountain Pine Beetle Working Group that will consist of a Pennington County Commissioner, a member from each of the following county departments to include Emergency Management, Fire, Sheriff, and Weed and Pest, that will develop a mountain pine beetle annual action plan until the current epidemic population of mountain pine beetles and the elevated risk of catastrophic wildfires that exists due to mountain pine beetle activity in Pennington County subsides.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to allow the formation of this committee. Any further discussion from the commission?
I guess I'd just point out in that, till it subsides, you know, sometimes you create these committees or these working groups and they last forever. Well, our idea and our hope is that this epidemic's going to run its course soon, whether it's whether the intervention of man or whether it just peters out on its own. But this group working group hopefully won't last forever, it's just until this epidemic subsides.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission, from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, item D, the final one for pine beetle today is possibility of putting together some type of tree spraying reimbursement plan for the protection of mountain pine beetle. The only way you can effectively spray a tree is a tree that's unininfested by mountain pine beetle. They'll start spraying here first part of April, and you can spray up till probably June. You get much faster, you're kind of losing your effectiveness because the pine beetle generally starts flying in July and it'll max out right first part of August. So if you can spray your tree in April, if you do it right, you've got about a 99% chance of saving your tree. And you've got to do it yearly. I know some of the other counties are doing various cost share programs. Even one county's allowing buying pickup sprayer, mounted sprayers that they're letting out to private landowners to use on their own, which I guess I'm not real in favor for, for two reasons. We've got plenty of commercial applicators in the area, let the professional handle it. Second, those diaphragm pumps, they're 200 gallons per minute. I mean, unless you really know what you're doing, you can, you're going to lose your effectiveness, and plus, you'd be going, you'd be ruining that pump left and right if people aren't trained properly on that. And I really don't have the time going through that every time somebody comes in and wants to use that sprayer. I think our money would be better spent on doing some type of reimbursement program, a cost share program, and probably isolate it in our highest infested areas. Because like I showed that one property, the church camp, that's the only recourse they really have for the next few years because, yeah, you can cut and chunk, but Forest Service got all those trees infested, they're just waiting to reinfest that private landowner. So I guess I'm just asking for some direction from the board if you want me to pursue putting together some type of reimbursement program. And I'm pretty sure we can use our Title III funding on that. I think we can just amend our current project, and the commissioners can amend that and include the cost share of tree spraying.
So Scott, you'd present the program next time?
Yep.
I guess as far as I'm concerned, bring it back and make a proposal to us, eh?
Okay.
So is the wording of the motion that you have suggested?
Just, yeah, saying you authorized me to go ahead and pursue one.
I will make the motion to have Pennington County Weed and Pest develop a mountain pine beetle preventative tree spraying reimbursement program for Pennington County landowners in the highest infested areas of the county according to the state and county mountain pine beetle 2011-2012 survey.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to develop a program, and my understanding is that you would recommend or bring it back to the commission for final action.
Yep.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And just one more quick thing before I leave. There is going to be, the state's putting on a pine beetle tree spraying workshop in Rapid City in Spearfish this weekend from 10:00 to noon at the Walt Taylor Building down at the fairgrounds in Rapid City here, and from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Spearfish Recreation Center in Spearfish. So if you want to learn more about that.
Thank you, Scott. Scott, do you have any familiarity with what Commissioner Davis had in mind when he placed the expenditure of Title III funds on the agenda?
Well, it looks like Danny might ask more than I do.
You know, Danny, or?
Good morning, Danny, Gordon County Fire. Commissioner Davis yesterday afternoon asked me if I would kind of cover this item for him. I think about two weeks ago, we had a quick presentation from Jeff Shugruh, Fire Chief of Silver City, and Bob Thompson, District Ranger, about a project up around Silver City. Commissioner Davis, I believe, was hoping in some fashion to help reimburse Silver City and some of those private individuals for some of their costs associated with that mitigation. I think maybe we're a little premature in actually acting on that, so I think at the time that the best action would be to ask that working group that was just formed to also look at that as some of that mountain pine beetle and fire mitigation measures that could be taken. So I think just that could be another duty assigned to them, so try to be very quick and brief.
Thank you very much. I don't think we need a motion to cover that. Scott's aware of it, Nancy's aware of it.
Yeah, and they are, through our project, they are qualified. We, looking at the numbers, or thinking of the numbers off the top of my head, I think we marked 145 on that 300-foot buffer of pine beetle infested trees, and on the incurred cost, they are eligible for 100% reimbursement on that. So that's, you know, 145 trees you're only looking at, maybe, depends on how we, if they had them removed or if they cut and chunked them, but it could be up to $3,500. So it's, I don't know if they're looking for more than that, but we can look at that as a working group, so.
Thank you. Next item, items from the chair, the Compensation Committee Liaison Appointment, and I've asked Commissioner Buskerud to serve on that committee, and did he accept?
Commissioner Busker said he would be willing to serve if he wanted to vote on the board.
Okay, I will move that Commissioner Buskerud serve on the Compensation Committee as a liaison. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to appoint Commissioner Buskerud to the Compensation Committee. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Please vote Josh on the board.
Good. I was looking to go on vacation. The presentation of Title III funds for Silver City was presented by Danny Gordon, and it was much shorter than your report would have been.
Yeah.
But it was favorably received, so we're on item 24.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
At the planning and zoning last week, we were presented with a road naming ordinance amendment, and I don't recall that it was ever brought before the commission for any direction or anything. And I felt like the commission should be the one to say whether or not this should be something that we're doing. In ordinary times, that's always been the way it has worked, that the possibility of an ordinance is brought to the commission, you know, from the staff, and we direct that. So for me, I felt like we, as the commission, needed to talk about this. I feel like there are many different departments that are involved in it, and I was concerned about the extent of the discussion. We were talking about in this proposed ordinance having fees, but I mean, I know that we have some income and some designation for signage in other different departments, and I was concerned that we would put an ordinance in with a fee that really was not appropriate to charge our constituency. So that's where I'm, I guess I'm just curious if road naming ordinance is something we want to pursue, and if it is, I would like to see a lot of involvement in the departments that are a part of signage. I guess I wasn't comfortable with some of the answers to questions that I had about the involvement of other departments, so.
Okay, now, I see in our consent calendar from planning and zoning, a road naming ordinance to be continued until May 1st.
Yeah.
And is it, am I hearing you correctly that your comments are to call our attention to that so that we?
I don't believe it should be on the consent calendar. I believe that we, as a commission, need to decide if this is what we want to do. You know, what is it that we're really trying to accomplish?
Maybe I'm misinterpreting something here, but if we, if the consent calendar recommends moving it to May 1st.
And I believe that.
That we have time in between to address it as a commission.
Sure.
In a formal way.
And I would think that what happened is immediately after planning and zoning, I wanted to make sure that this was on the agenda, and I requested it. And I believe that since then, planning and zoning has made some changes on it and whatever, so.
Well, the reason is, is on the consent calendar is because the Planning Commission actually recommended that be continued to the May 1st date so that we can do some further research on it and look into it a little bit further and maybe meet with some additional people.
But the point is, the county commissioners have never directed you to do that, never directed you to make this ordinance. We've never directed them to say, there's a need for this ordinance, and we want the planning and zoning staff to go ahead with it.
That may be the case, but I've always understood that we have some discretion to move ahead with certain ordinances if we felt it was necessary. And we did fill this, and we felt this was an ordinance that we're currently, it's not necessarily an ordinance, but this is something we're already doing in our office, is doing all the street name, road naming in our office. We've done that for years and years and years. It has just never been in ordinance form, and so.
Never had fees?
Nope, we've never had fees. And the fees are minimal, and then the one fee is just for the placement of signs. It's a $100 fee for a road naming. That's really the additional fee that is included in this. The $350 is for the installation of that sign. That would cover that cost of that sign, and that would be the only fee that would be part of it. That is really, it's for the installation of that sign and not necessarily something that we would, it's to put it up, is what I'm saying. The $100 is what we would help cover our cost of going through the procedure, because there is a pretty lengthy procedure that we currently do in order to road, name roads within Pennington County.
But I still believe my point is, Dan, that not a single commissioner of the county is aware that you were even doing it. Why didn't you discuss it with us? Why, it would seem like if you're going to go through all of that work, that you'd want some support from the commission.
I guess I just considered it as something we've already, we already do in our office, which it is. We already do everything that's in here, we currently do. And the only reason we moved ahead is because we thought it was just putting it in ordinance form.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I might just mention, yeah, I think it's probably everything that you do along with the help from other departments, but the, I myself felt that the charge was the government to hook the people with another $300, $350 to name a road and put up a sign. And I guess that's one of the reasons why I wanted to discuss it some more.
Jay, do you have any guidance for us on this in terms of, I appreciate the discussion and understand some of the concerns, but at this point, given the status of the proposed ordinance identified as a first reading on today's calendar, whether it remains on the consent calendar or not, for us as a commission to intercept that process is the guidance I'm seeking.
The first reading, of course, you can put it on hold. Now, you just can't have the two readings within less than five days or something of one another, and we don't do that because you meet every, you know, only twice a month or whatever. So you can put things on hold right now, reconsider, send information back with Dan to come back another day. I don't know if I'm answering your question exactly. You don't have to go forward to a second reading right away. You can study it longer and then schedule it for a second reading. Might have to be, have you already advertised both the dates?
Yes, it's been advertised, but this is a normal procedure, is that it went through Planning Commission, which it has to go through them, and then it'll go to County Board for a first reading and a second reading. And any of them can continue the item as long as they feel necessary.
And you can direct Dan to make any kind of changes to the document at this point and bring it back for a second reading, so that's all within your purview at this point.
Mr. Davis.
Just so everybody knows, the motion in the Planning Commission was moved by Davis and seconded by Troutman to table the item until more information is provided. And then there was a little bit of hesitant to that and that didn't go to pass, so Nancy and I withdrew our motion. And then a substitute motion was made, and it really wasn't a substitute because we removed our first and the second, not the first motion, but moved by Hall and seconded by Svenix to continue ordinance amendment 1110 to the April 23rd, 2012 Planning Commission meeting in order for all agencies involved to meet to clarify the process for road name signs and to address the concerns of the Planning Commission.
And the action on that motion was, has it passed?
Passed, yep.
So the Planning Commission didn't really want it to go forward at this point?
No, it shouldn't have been on here.
Well, it has to go in front of County Board. It was, excuse me, it was advertised for this date, and it's just to be moved ahead.
Why was it advertised when the planning and zoning said not to move it forward?
It had already been advertised before Planning Commission even got it, which we have to do as any ordinance amendment requires. By state law, they have to be advertised.
So what you're seeing is every time an ordinance is proposed, even though planning and zoning hasn't recommended it, it's been advertised already?
This is one that we felt was, you know, I've always understood that we have the option as planning to move ahead with certain ordinance amendments also. And so we advertised it, moved it as an ordinance amendment, went to Planning Commission, and because it's been advertised, it has to go in front of County Board. Even if County Board just makes a motion to continue it, it still has to be heard by County Board.
How can we do that when it hasn't officially by motion been brought to us from P and Z? The motion does not say move it forward to us, Dan.
I'm wondering, and I don't know your procedures over there for sure, Dan, but I'm wondering if maybe you got ahead of yourself a little bit in advertising it, if it hadn't been approved by planning and zoning, because you can't change an ordinance. been approved by planning and zoning, because you, you can't change an ordinance if planning and zoning doesn't recommend, or can you just bring it directly, can you bypass planning and zoning and bring it directly to the county commission?
No.
No, not to the county commission, through the planning commission.
But, but you can't do it, you can't change it if they don't agree to it. And so, to advertise the change before they've agreed to it seems to be a little premature. And I think that's what people are struggling with.
Commissioner Davis has a comment.
I think we can just take care of the whole problem by just making a motion to continue this to the April 23rd meeting of the planning commission and send it back to them.
Precisely.
And that's what the motion is.
And that, there should be some changes in the way they do things.
I'll second that for discussion, but I, I'm not sure that that's what we want to do if this board is not interested in the ordinance at all. So, and if, and if that's coming directly from the planning commission or the planning office, maybe we should have Dan make a presentation to this board to see if we even want to go that next step. Because why ask the planning commission to do this if there isn't any support up here for it?
Yep, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Chair.
It's, yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, if he doesn't have any, if he doesn't have any support here to, to raise the fee of that three hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Holloway. This board could make a substitute motion or I'd withdraw my motion from that and stay, table it, do whatever you'd like to do with it.
Can I inquire, is it, is it the ordinance overall that's, that's falling with disfavor or is it just one provision of it dealing with fees? I mean, I, I have not been a part of this, so this is all kind of new to me, so I'm just trying to pick up.
For me, it's been the process. I, I just was pretty amazed to, to sit in planning and zoning and have an ordinance that I was very aware, I mean, Heidi's been standing here wanting to say something about signage and, and I know that there's some things with the emergency management with signage and so on and, and I felt like here's an ordinance that was just looking at planning and zoning and their issues. I didn't feel it was a good county and it encompassed all of the county issues. And I also felt like it, we should have been able to guide planning and zoning staff and we did not have that right. And now I'm really disgusted because of what the actual motion was for planning and zoning and now we're sitting here with it on the agenda as if planning and zoning had been sent, had sent it to us and they haven't. So, I, that part really bothers me.
So, I'd make a substitute motion to ask the planning office to present back to the board their suggestion on a amendment to ordinance 11-10 with whatever supporting documentation they might have, at whatever point in time they may have that in the near, in the future.
I'll second that.
Beans of cans been opened. And there's a few worms crawling out here and there.
Worms are weak.
Do, would the board like to include a policy or something? When the 911 was originally instigated years ago and, and county at that time, the 911 fund was supposed to take care of the 911 rural addressing all this. At that time, the, the commissioners said, we're going to sign every intersection in Pennington County and basically you had blanket authority to do that. This day and age, with the new MUTCD requirements, we need to have upper lowercase letters, the letters have to be bigger, they have to be on, on a better retro reflectivity on the sign. Most of the signs in Pennington County, rural addressing signs, street name signs need to be replaced and upgraded. We have no policy. I do not have authority to go into a township and sign a township intersection. I do not have authority to go into a road district, which we have a hundred road districts, and sign their roads. So, now it leads me to the question, should Pennington County Highway Department be going into all these other government entities, territories and putting up signs or should we be charging them? My problem is if we open the door and say, you do yours and you do yours, they're never going to be done to standards. They'll put up some old wooden piece of post and hang a sign on it. So then that goes back to an ordinance. Should we enact an ordinance and put requirements in it that Paint County Highway Department's going to be responsible for, for doing rural addressing signs, but how can we, our expense get passed to that government entity? Why should the taxpayers that pay taxes to the highway department be putting signs up in a road district that they can tax those people or in a township where they collect taxes and license plate fees? So, I mean, the worms are crawling out of the can. I've never had a policy. I've told some road districts, I'm not going in your road districts, it's your problem. But then we have a citizen or a resident that says, we want to name this road and it's in a road district and yet the ordinance says the highway department has to put the sign. I mean, Eric, where do we want to go?
Mr. Chairman, I got a suggestion for the county highway superintendent. Work with planning and zoning and the sheriff and the emergency management and all of those people and you guys work on this ordinance and then come and present it to the county commission and see if you can get three people up here to agree with you. If you do, then you can send it to the planning and zoning and go through your whole ordinance amendment process.
But do you want?
Whatever you think, you're the county highway superintendent and you know best. You know a heck of a lot better than the people sitting up here do.
I, I was told that you had input on this and, and it sounds to me like it's still you, not really solidified. This is exactly what I was saying at P and Z and what I'm saying today. You guys need to get together with the government or the department heads that are involved in this and look at all of the regulations, look at everything that every department has to deal with and then come back to us.
Just try to take care of all your concerns in, in both planning and zoning and highway and, and emergency management. Take care of your concerns, work together as a team and, and see what kind of changes need to be made and, and come back with a recommendation to us. That's what I'd like to see.
Yep, and that's what I was asking for.
But it'd be, it'd really be nice for me, I, we can write the language and write an ordinance, but do you want us to go into the road district and townships and put their signs up?
Do you think that's the best scenario? It sounded like you thought that that was probably the best scenario because then we would have consistency.
If we get paid, if somehow we can be reimbursed.
Well, then figure that out and come in with a recommendation.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I, I think there, I think you've hit a, you've hit a, a positive note when you say, there has to be consistency.
Correct.
And there's, there's these regulations. It says that sign has to be this. And so then it does make some sense to have one centralized places to do that. But, you know, work with those people and, and see what you come up with as the best scenario for us. But for five of us to make the decision on what should happen, you probably get six different versions.
Okay, we can do that.
Just stand fast, Commissioner Davis has the chair.
Heidi, I, I was going to answer your question with my feelings and I don't feel that we should, we should put signs up for free in road districts or in townships. As a matter of fact, I'm not too sure we can because those are government entities unto themselves and they have their own taxing authority. I, I don't think we can go in there without a memorandum of understanding of some kind with those people that says, this is what we're going to do in your, in your bailiwick. So, I'm with you. I, I think you're right on it. It says they ought to have some consistency and if we possibly can, I think we should make some kind of a ruling in all of this if we do it that this, we put the signs up, the county highway department will put the signs up, but they will charge a nominal fee to the road districts and the townships to put them up in their districts. Which is my thoughts.
Thank you for those comments. I think that's my next direction to get a legal opinion on, under the 911 statutes if county's allowed to do it in a, in another entity's boundaries and if we do by ordinance, can we charge a fee? So, I'll be talking to you, Jay.
As, as you pursue that discussion, Heidi and Jay, I'm wondering if, if this thing divides itself, one, into having a policy for you and number two, for having an ordinance for the county. Is that?
I would envision it, we need a policy for the highway department so we know what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, plus tie it into an ordinance so that it's a county law that can be enforceable. Yeah, there's two ways to go, two things that have to be done.
Okay. Do we have our thoughts together enough to move on?
I do. Vote on.
The motion.
There was a motion, a second, substitute motion to, that the planning department make a presentation to the board of commissioners regarding the ordinance amendment.
Yep. So, we, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we are ready now to move to the planning and zoning consent agenda. And I think we've already talked about the first one. And there's a public hearing on a rezone, first reading, and that's continued till April 3rd. Second reading of rezone, recommended approval. Vacation of a right of way, recommended approval. Layout plat to be continued until March 20th. Lay out plat for Canadian Pacific, recommended approval. Spring Creek watershed management project implementation plan, recommended approval and a grant payment, Spring, Spring Creek watershed management plan, recommended approval. Anyone wish any of the items on the consent calendar removed?
Can I make a small suggestion that you pull the first item A, remove it from the consent agenda, make a motion to postpone indefinitely so that it's pulled apart from your consent agenda and it's dealt with separately?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item A.
Okay, item A is pulled. Any other items that people, either commission or the public wishes removed from the consent agenda? If not, was there a second?
Second.
It's a motion to pull item A from the agenda. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Chair would now entertain a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda with, I don't know, how do I say that?
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve items B, C, D, E, F, G and H of the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, regular agenda, is there anyone here interested in the first reading of the ordinance?
Can you back?
I need you to back up and make that motion on A.
That's correct, thank you very much. We, we do need a motion to address the item A that was removed from the consent calendar. And it was suggested that a motion to postpone it indefinitely.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Holly, for keeping us on track.
Item I is the first reading in a public hearing of ordinance amendment 1102, Pennington County, to add section 319 regarding vacation home rentals to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Planning commission recommended approval of this ordinance amendment with several changes that, that you do have the final version that was approved by the planning commission. It will allow vacation home rentals in a number of different zoning districts through the use of a conditional use permit and there's other requirements that are in here. I guess I could go through a little history of this. On March 1st, county board moved to approve a formation of a committee to develop an ordinance amendment for vacation home rentals and further moved that the board of commissioners make an appointments to a committee, to form a committee. The board appointed Rita Chapman, Jeff Segrew, Joyce Segrew, Vern Volmer, Corey Tomavick, Todd Tobin, Gene Quinn and Charlie Johnson as the chairman, but as a non-voting member. This committee met many, many meetings and for several months throughout the summer last year and did a lot of research. They worked very hard to form this ordinance committee. They didn't always agree, but they came up with some, with a proposed ordinance that did go in front of the planning commission. We did hold three public meetings. The planning commission actually met four times, making a lot of revisions to the ordinance. And what you have in, in front of you is the final version that the planning commission came up with. The highlights of the proposed ordinance is, is that they be allowed as allowed uses in highway service and general commercial zoning districts and may be allowed in a planned unit development. And then through the conditional use permit, they would be allowed in general egg, limited egg, low density residential and VHRs would also be permitted through approval of a CUP in a suburban residential district if the applicant has a permit from the state of South Dakota to operate the VHR at the date of passage of this ordinance amendment or if the applicant has applied for such a permit at the date of passage of this ordinance amendment. There's permit requirements that they would need South Dakota license from the state and a sales tax license. There's also a provision that says that the CUP be revoked upon sale or transfer of the ownership of the property. There's a requirement that they have a local contact and there's application requirements for the CUP. There's performance standards. Some of those would be regarding maximum occupancy, maximum number of bedrooms, that they have a local contact that has to be within 50 miles or that the owner has to be within 50 miles of the vacation home. There's a minimum age requirement, quiet hours would be established, restrictions on open fires. There's also a sign and notification requirement for an interior sign, informational sign and an exterior informational sign. Then there's also other sections throughout the ordinance would that, would have to be amended in order to fit this into our ordinance.
Any comments or questions from the commission? Do you have other folks who wish to comment?
I believe there is a large number, or there are a number of people who would like to discuss the proposed ordinance.
I think in order to kind of maintain some continuity, those people wishing to make comments will come forward, address the audience and the commission. And I would request that we do not have any two-way dialogues going on back and forth without the, those, the person who speaks and has the floor going through the chair and having permission to do so. This is simply to maintain some decorum in the room and in the meeting and normally, my experience from previous activity in this regard, the proponents spoke first and the opponents spoke second. If that's acceptable to the rest of the commission, we will ask those people who wish to speak in favor of the ordinance to do so. And I think in deference to everyone involved, if you hear someone ahead of you say something if you hear someone ahead of you say something, repeating it may be a little redundant, but feel free to speak your mind. So at this point, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance and the amendments, please come forward. Identify yourself and we'll proceed.
Mr. Chair, this is the quietest I've heard this much in six months.
Hey there, my name's Jim Peterson from Hill City. You know, as Dan said, there was a lot of effort put into this. And I think everybody should be thanked for doing that. You know, it's a compromise that came out. I don't agree with everything, and I'm sure a lot of other peoples don't agree with what's in here as well. I'm still, and I've never really been clear why we had to go to this extent. The CUP process, I'm still think is a process that works and, but in the light of a compromise, I'm happy to see where it's gotten to. There's a couple pieces, one that really bothers me, and I guess I'll just talk about that one. And that's the transfer issue. Right now, if I have a vacation home and I choose to sell it based on that, it's not a guarantee that the new owner is able to get a CUP. They have to go through the process. So as my understanding is, the CUP stops and a new one has to be asked for. Is that how, is that how I'm supposed to understand that? And I think that really brings an economic hardship to the person that has that. I think it's unjust. I think there's another way to handle it. And if you have a review in a year on the first CUP, then why wouldn't it be advisable to have a, you know, on a transfer, just transfer the CUP and then have a review in a year with the new owner? I don't understand why a new owner dictates that that particular property will not be able to be used as a CUP. And that person that's trying to sell it is, you know, A, the process is slowed down and that's something somebody can live with, but it potentially could scare people away in terms of that. So that's one thing in this particular new proposed ordinance that I found to be a little bit a hardship. The exterior sign I can live with, but I don't, I don't see that as being a need. And again, I'll just go back to just the general CUP process. I see where you went with the standards to have some kind of measurable result. I think that makes sense. And at the end of the day, it's probably a pretty good compromise, but that was the one thing that I still have a hardship with.
Thank you very much. Any questions about the commissioner? Anyone else?
Since it's our ordinance, I feel we should probably do this.
Callie Chapman and Rita Chapman, my wife?
Basically, just want to do it real quick. Information from all areas of the country has passed through our hands in the committee this past year. We have been working on this for over a year. The final draft is a compilation result of this information. We have studied counties and cities. Basically, what you have in front of you came from cities, just so you have that background. The fact, I do honestly think that we need to keep SRDs in there wholeheartedly, not have a little, if you're doing this, then you can, but if you haven't been, then you can't. I think we need to look further into the future than that. A good example is Hill City. Hill City has had use on review for the past four years, as stated by Brett McMcKinnon, the city manager, in our committee meetings. Vacation homes in Hill City limits are not a problem, and that is a suburban residential city. There's about one complaint a year, and the complaints have been parking. We also looked at what our neighboring counties are doing. They are just as much a tourist destination as we are. Custer County, Mead County, and Lawrence County don't address the vacation homes. In numerous other places all around the country, just as here, they've been debated and public meetinged ad nauseam. We're doing the same thing here, and our result is the same that they have had. Most of the ones that we have investigated were permitted with standards. We're doing standards and conditions. So you have to meet the standards and still go through the conditional use permit process. So we actually are doubling it up. We have standards and conditions. And the standards, we feel, make the perfect neighbor. Once again, with Hill City, real problems versus urban legend. What are the real problems? Is this what we wanted? Not entirely. I'll repeat what Tim said. Are we in the spirit of compromise willing to accept this? Yes, we are. I do want to say thank you to all the committee members for their hard work. It was a difficult committee to work with, but I believe we came together for the common good and with a workable solution. I think Charlie Johnson did a great job cheering the vacation home rental ordinance committee, and we thank all the commissioners who actually took the time to attend the public meetings that we did hold. Once again, my, our major focus was that even though this takes care of ours as it's written, we think SRDs should remain in there totally with the conditional use permit. We think the process takes care of the problems. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Can you, under added section 319, vacation rental homes, it's on page, at least at the bottom of the page here, it says one, so I don't know what way he's back in the book. Subsection B, it states here that vacation rental homes are permitted with approval of a condition use permit in suburban residential zoning districts if the applicant has a permit from the state of South Dakota to operate a vacation rental home at the date of passage of this ordinance amendment. What's the object there?
That was put on by the planning committee. They added that in.
So we're just trying to grandfather those people?
Yes. The idea is to grandfather, there are a lot of people who are currently operating illegally, and if they haven't been an issue, there has been no public outcry that they're there. So they're saying that if you're legal with the state, let's make the ones who are current legal with the county.
But not let anybody else do it?
And then not let anybody else, right.
And that came from, that came from the planning commission?
Yes. And I believe they also, with that, they wanted to have a resolution that in one year, we re, you readdress it. Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I have a copy of the resolution in regards to the grace period. And they were gonna do a grace period of 90 days, basically allowing people that currently technically are illegal to apply without the late fees or the additional $500. That's, that's the resolution. And yes, this was more or less, the section down here was more or less grandfathering those that are out there right now, operating, haven't received any complaints on them, technically illegal, to come in and apply for this if they have that state license to operate under the state, because the state does require a license to be a vacation home rental.
I think.
It seems like there's, what we're doing is setting up this grandfather clause that we're gonna let these people, but now nobody else can do it in the future.
I think it's an attempt.
If they are currently operating now and nobody's complaining about them, they are going to let them get the conditional use permit.
But we don't know how we might be able to operate with nobody complaining about them in the future, but we're just not gonna let those people do it.
That's what was discussed, yes.
And if I can barge in here just for a second. I think it's a, it's an attempt to, to kind of appease both sides of the issue because there's such a, it's such, it's a hot topic. And let the, let the people that are doing it right now do it, and let them kind of reveal themselves whether they're gonna be good stewards of this, for the business that they're doing. And if it shows that it's really not a problem in this county, then let's open it back up to discussion and open it up to other people to do the same thing. And if, you know, if we fall flat on our face, you know, then one side or the other wins.
That was the intention.
Yeah.
I feel that we already have the history of it. We already have legally in cities. We already have with the use on review. We already have adjoining counties with, in suburban residential areas with vacation home rentals. We already have grandfathered in vacation home rentals, and we already have that history. But this is the attempt to say, well, let's have a current history. But I would agree that we see what the intention is. Is it necessary? I don't know.
Mr. Chair, if I might answer some of that. I guess where that piece came from was from people that were making contact with me that didn't think that it should be in suburban residential. I happen to agree with that. But I also happen to disagree with some that they wanted to completely shut out suburban residential. So I thought, well, the folks that are already in it, which is you folks, the Tomavicks, some others, if you were honest enough to come forward and get a license and operate with a state license, there's no way that we should be putting you out of business. So I wrote that, and then the planning commission picked up on it and Carol Hall, and it's all rewrote it, and then turned it into the planning commission, and that's why it came out here, to allow those to be, that were in business before now have a permit from the state to be in business, continue to be in business as long as they're good stewards of the vacation home rentals. I thought that was a great compromise between the two. And as you know, from the previous gentleman there, Mr. Peterson, there is a deal in here also that if the land is ever sold, or the property is ever sold, that conditional use permit does not go with it. So we have another way to look at it also in that, in that light. That's where it came from.
Mr. Chair. It would seem to me, it would seem to me that we're creating a special class of people by having this grandfathering clause in. And you may have other well-respected and make good neighbor person who wants to be treated like the Chapmans. If they're, I don't know if you've got a vacation rental home in a suburban residential, but, but if you do, they would like to be treated just as good as them. And they could be just as good a neighbors, but yet we're not allowing that. I think the conditional use permit gives us the teeth to control bad managers. And, and of course, the conditional use permit is only as good as the board who authorizes it. You put all the regulations you want on it. And if they, and if the people don't comply, we can pull the conditional use permit. So it seems like we have the ability to control bad behavior rather than creating special classes of people.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to get into a great big argument about this situation, but we have, I know, but we have, we have grandfathering all over the county in all different kinds of ways. And so these folks were already in business, and as well as, we talked about somebody that wants a bed and breakfast, well, if they had one before the licensing effect came in, they were grandfathered in. But as soon as they go to change anything, then the grandfathering goes away. So I guess that's where it came from, is that the people that talked to me didn't want it in suburban residential, period. And I thought it was just a compromise to keep those in business that were already in business, in business without causing a lot of problems and wind up with these two gentlemen in the courtroom every other day. So that's where it came from.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in favor of the ordinance?
Good morning, I'm Mark Rutterforth. You'll forgive my voice, I'm getting over a cold here. I'm in favor of this ordinance. I believe it is a compromise. And there are three things that I'm concerned about. One has just been discussed. You either have a conditional use permit process that works, or you don't have faith in that process to do what it's intended to do. So what I mean by that is, you know, you set performance standards at any time if you're not in compliance with your permit, you can get dragged before the commission here and have your permit revoked. Either that process works or it does not. We should not, in my view, erect other obstacles that says, well, Mary had had this thing going before we passed the ordinance. Frank, you bought into suburban residential, sorry, you can't use it as a vacation rental. Or what the real effect of, upon sale or transfer of the property, that CUP goes away, is eventually you're gonna drive all of those vacation rentals out of suburban residential. And if that's your intent, then just say so upfront in the ordinance. So that's my feeling on that. The other, the other area of concern for me is the performance standards that are laid out in this ordinance are the equivalent in my mind of trying to get your neighbor's dog to stop barking, if he might bark at some point in the future by passing this ordinance. No campfires after 10 o'clock. No kids over the age of 13 sleeping in a tent beside the house. Okay, are you really trying to ensure that by someone having to be 21 years of age, you want to guarantee that they can legally throw a drunken party there? You know, if you got a service member who's 18 years old, comes home on leave, wants to rent a vacation home, that's fine, go somewhere other than Pennington County. These, in my view, are overly restrictive, and they do not apply to the homeowner who may live next door to you. So they can shine lights at the property all hours of the night. They can have cars parked all over the lawn. They can have sixteenagers in the house. Parking's not an issue because they're not a vacation rental. But because you are, you're subject to all these restrictions. The one, the one that really irked me that I'm glad to see has now gone was guests at the vacation rental have got to be gone by 10 o'clock. Now even the campfire, what time does it get dark in the summertime up here? So you might as well say, don't go outside, don't show your face after dark in the summertime. And I just think that's misguided. You're trying to legislate how people are gonna behave. And you know what? If you have people who misbehave in a vacation rental, or if you have a neighbor that you don't like, who doesn't take care of his dog, who paints his house some lime green neon color that you don't like, what remedy do you have for that type of situation? I don't think you do, and I'm not sure we should apply it to a vacation home rental either. The third one, I'm gonna pull a Rick Perry and say, gosh, I can't remember what the third one was. But, and truly, I can't, so I'll sit down. I thank you very much for your time.
I just thought it was gonna be the whole ordinance was your third item. Mr. Chair. I think we can ask these two gentlemen right over here what happens when you got a barking dog and they won't shut up. I think they pretty much take care of it when it comes from the sheriff's office to the state attorney and go to the judges. And that's exactly how you take care of a barking dog. But by the time you go through all of that with a vacation home rental, they're already there and gone, and somebody else is in there again. I guess that's kind of where it comes from. And these people, these people that live around these purported vacation home rentals also have some rights. And they bought their property with the knowledge that they were not going to be ran out of their house, people parking on their lawns because there's no place for them to park at the neighbors while the vacation home rental is. The business with the fire rings. The fire business was is that people didn't want to sit up all night and watch the neighbor's fire ring because if they went to bed, the guy's gonna get, if, let me say, if they got drunk and walked off and left the fire, now they're gonna burn their house out, so they have to sit up all night to make sure the fire isn't gonna get away. So that's where that kind of came from. So it was all, it was basically throughout this whole thing with a compromise with everybody to try to make it work. And it had nothing to do with painting the house neon yellow or neon lime green or whatever it might be. It had to do with people's rights that were already there before. It had to do with people's rights that were already there before this thing came about.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
But Ken, doesn't that hold true whether your neighbor is a vacation rental person or just the neighbor that's damned irresponsible?
And I think I just explained it.
Well, I think if we have the conditional use permit, we can deal with all of that kind of stuff. But, you know, I don't know if we say that you have to be inside the house by 10 o'clock at night, you can't have any outside activities after 10 o'clock at night. Are we telling everybody in that neighborhood they got to be in at 10 o'clock? Or just the people that are renting the house?
Oh, you bet. Everyone.
Everybody's got to stay in at 10 o'clock. So if there's a vacation rental home in your neighborhood, everybody has to go in at 10 o'clock.
And through the whole, you mean all the other private citizens in there? I don't think that's written there at all, because you don't have to have a conditional use permit to live in your home. These people do, with the run of the vacation home rental, because they aren't living in that home.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, commissioners and staff. My name is Nathan Donovan. I'm a resident of Fort Collins, Colorado, and my parents live in Silver City. And I wanted to thank everyone involved for all the hard work and trauma involved in this to reach a resolution. I think the ordinance makes good sense, and I urge you to adopt it in its current form. As we've discussed here this morning, implementation of this will depend largely on goodwill and effective communication, and that can go a long way to resolving some of these issues that have been brought up. So I also have copies of letters that myself and my siblings wrote that may be part of your packet, but I'm not sure if you've seen them. So if it's appropriate, I'll give them to you.
You emailed these, didn't you, sir?
I did, I did, yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
So, good. Well, thank you for your time and everything you do for the county.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance?
If you've thought of your third point, there is a provision that you can speak again.
I get the Rick Perry sympathy break, right? Thank you. I did, and it goes back to the question of suburban residential district. When you buy into an SRD to live there, you are buying into that area with the full knowledge that you have a greater population density in that zoning district than any other choice you might make, okay? In my view, this is the equivalent of moving into an apartment building and then insisting that they not rent the apartment next door to you because you're afraid of what might happen should a tenant show up next door. These are residential uses of a residential property, which can be controlled by the CUP process, so that if you're in violation and you truly are creating a nuisance, there is remedy there, and you are going to lose the ability to rent that property out. So that was the one that I forgot. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no one else wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance? We will now, oh, excuse me, excuse me, I didn't see you.
For the record, my name is Vern Ballmer, and originally, I was totally opposed to having vacation rentals, because from my own experience, I was also a member of the committee, I guess you all know that. But I was very much opposed to the idea of allowing them, period. But people are going to do it. This is something that's going to happen, whether it's allowed or not, and it has been. The thing about this ordinance is it'll be a control over how it happens, who's allowed to do it and who's not allowed to do it for whatever reasons. The way it is, we have no control over it. People just do it, and they don't care what happens to the neighbors. So I'm in favor of the ordinance. It's a compromise. There's things about it I don't like, but it's something that I think will work. As I'm, you know, if we pass this, I think it'll work. So in that terms, I won't go into detail and say what I'm opposed to and what I don't like, but I just want to say that I think we need to pass this ordinance. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I think we've benefited from people identifying areas of sensitivity or concern, and just remind you that this is the first reading, so there may be amendments later on. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for sitting here for so long. You guys have been here for a long time. My name is Todd Tobin. I am a resident of Silver City in Pennington County. I was also a member of the Vacation Home Rental Committee. And I'll transition from what Vern, as a fellow committee member, said. I agree with the components of the compromises and so forth, with the exception of the suburban residential, which is the focus of my dissension, both from the current ordinance and as I shared this during the committee proceedings. When we look at opening it up in suburban residential to other businesses that is additionally, in addition to what's currently stated, the only real business, other than services like hospitals and museums and places of this nature, schools that are currently allowed in suburban residential per our ordinance in the county, the only one in addition to that is a hair salon, and that has a very small impact. It's a single person, there might be two, three cars at most, happen at a particular time. And I'm sure at the time that the ordinance was written 18 years ago, there was reasons for that, and certainly there's no issue with me on that item. My concern from a Pennington County perspective, from a legal perspective, and from a business perspective, when looking at the various zoning elements, is that the suburban residential is for that, neighborhoods and so forth. Some neighborhoods, as I've said in proceedings here in recent meetings, are transitioning from a residential to a commercial-type sector. Silver City, for example, is not, most others in the county that were within this committee's discussion and exploration were not a transition from a commercial to a residential or residential to commercial. These are residential areas that I'm mostly concerned with. When we take a look as a committee, and you as a commission, to looking at the future and say that we would allow in a suburban residential additional business uses, I think that really opens up a very different perspective long term. I'll use the example that in the current South Dakota Hospitality Association, where they have various types of lodging, vacation home rentals being one of them recognized as part of their industry, they also have one as what's known as a specialty resort. And if this is allowed, and if you approve this suburban residential component, and someone were to go and apply for a specialty resort, it would be difficult to stop them. And the scenario that I explained about a specialty resort is there is different amenities and services usually associated with a specialty resort. This could be any number of things, including amenities of stores and liquor and other types of sales, restaurants and so forth. So when that precedent is set, and we open that up for those types of avenues, which are legitimate businesses, and I'm very pro-business, I absolutely don't like restrictions, it's why I moved back to my native South Dakota from California. It was insane with the levels of regulation and restrictions there. So this is not that I'm opposed to the freedom of us being able to use our properties, it's simply looking at a suburban residential is zoned specifically for that purpose, and there's all these multitude of other types of zoning areas. If the suburban residential component was not involved in this ordinance, I would have no opposition whatsoever, and I doubt anybody else will, and I highly doubt there'd even have been a committee formed, simply because there is the opportunity for vacationers to come into the black hills, which always have been, and cabin rentals have always been a part of the deal. The scenario in the rub in a suburban residential, when we start bringing in a business in addition to what is allowed of a hair salon, the late economist Milton Friedman had a very succinct quote of describing and defining what is a business. In a business, he described as the effort of providing a product or a service for the sole intent of making a profit. The industry that had initiated this ordinance amendment, as to date and on the time that spent on the committee, never did provide any real data like any other type of business. And I had come before this board years ago on a project that I was involved with and was required to do a very extensive feasibility study. It ran over $100,000 that I had to pay out of my own pocket to do so, to provide the data that the city and the county at that time, and coming before you, had to look at so that you could make decisions. So we've looked at it from a business perspective on the committee to say, there's no real data that's really saying this is good, bad, or indifferent. What impact would this have in our neighborhoods or in the county as a whole? Is this something that would be like the Sturgis rally? Mead County has suffered for years, Sturgis specifically, of not really making any money off this, or even breaking even, but there's a lot of people make a ton of money on the Sturgis rally. So when we looked at the industry perspective, and we looked at what was being placed before us to make decisions as a committee, the industry was not able to. Now, there is data out there. It would take a study, it would take a year-long period certainly to study this, and I'm certain that in the future that there will be data that will support this or any other industry. But we, the committee, the Planning Commission, and you, the county commissioners, have no real industry data to base this on a fact of should we allow this type of scenario in a neighborhood? Open that up, because how can it be stopped? If we open this up to other businesses, how can we stop other businesses legitimately justifying to be in a suburban residential area? One item I would like to note that sort of ties this in, I was in favor, and I initiated on the committee, a distance between the buildings. I used 500 feet. It was not, it didn't gain any traction, and we compromised it 300 feet. Now, the Planning Commission has removed that element. In my opinion, if there was a substantial distance of a minimum of 300 feet between structures, foundation to foundation, as we looked at it, it would eliminate a lot of these problems, where you have high-density residential and you have low-density residential. The low-density, obviously, there's going to be fewer problems. The high-density, it's a neighborhood, and we get into property rights in both ways, which I'll finish on this statement. It was mentioned earlier that there was a concern of the, you know, transfer of title. And there are really solid, good people in the vacation home rental business doing a good job, and they're good neighbors. Nobody argues that. But every business goes out of business. That's another quote from Milton Friedman. Eventually, you sell it, eventually it closes, eventually it gets sold off or merges with another entity, et cetera. If we, in this commission today, and/or in this future, immediate future, make a decision to go forward, what happens when you're not here? What happens when that business is sold and another entity buys it? And now it comes in, if it's automatically transferred in, what's going to stop development mindset of buying properties in areas for that sole purpose? And then again, we get into the hotel motel next door to us who live in residential neighborhoods. If it wasn't in the suburban residential area, would not have a problem with this ordinance in any way, shape, or form. In fact, I support it wholeheartedly. With and without the compromises, I think it's just the right thing to do because it's emerging. But we open up a can of worms in suburban residential, and we're going to pit neighbors against neighbors when it comes to the conditional use permit, and it's going to get ugly. It's going to get very ugly, because nobody wants to have to go speak out against their neighbor. Nobody wants to have to go publicly on the record and speak out against their neighbor. So I strongly caution the commission to really look at this SRD component, its short-term and long-term ramifications, from a business perspective in this county, and what we're going to do from this point forward on affecting our neighborhoods. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
So you're saying if we allow it in a suburban residential, then you can put specialty resorts?
If you would allow this as a business classification in addition to a hair salon, what legal precedent would you have to say no to a specialty resort or conventional hotel motel? Or really, for that matter, any other? You would have to go to the court system to decide.
That, I, yes, you, or yea? I mean, that doesn't seem possible to me.
I guess I would disagree with that in theory, that your ordinance has permitted uses, conditional uses. If it's not on a permitted use, it doesn't come in. On a conditional use, you can decide whether it comes in, particularly if you have the background, if it doesn't fit with the neighborhood and all the other language that's in the ordinance. So when people speak of precedent, their suggestion, they make an assumption that it will happen, and that's nothing more than an assumption. You might decide to let that happen someday. You'd probably make an amendment to an ordinance to do just that. But it's not an automatic, and it doesn't have to go to the court system. So it, I don't know, assumptions belong. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might clarify, I think I could see where Todd's coming from there with that, with going to court business, because I think it's a graduated deal that, okay, somebody comes, we have a problem, if we have a problem in suburban residential, but we just leave it blanket and wide open. The people will come in and say, like you said, pit neighbor against neighbor, and pretty soon you've got a problem that winds up in the court system. I don't think you were making reference to the fact that it was an absolute to go to court. It was a deal that is going to graduate up the scale to go to court in order to get the citizens that live there a rectifying situation, if there is a problem. And I keep saying this if business, because we have no clue what's going to happen with this thing.
And if I may just add, Mr. Holloway, one other comment. I did speak with a number of local law firms and attorneys who I know personally from the private sector, and obviously, this is not a final outcome, and they're not looking at, but looking at what they're reading today, it certainly, in their opinion, gave a number of wiggle room was one of the comments made, that would allow various avenues for, this would lay that foundation to justify if someone was really determined and had the will to do so and the money to throw at it, would certainly give rise to other types of business applications based on this, was their opinion.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Pam?
I own property, and I'm a full-time resident of Pine Cliff Estates above Johnson Siding. I also was a member of the draft committee. Residential neighborhoods like mine with covenants, and we're an SRD, we have a road district, and we do not want vacation house rentals in our development. We have covenants, and that's been sort of a deferral. If you've got covenants, take care of yourself. And our covenants are not tight enough at this point. I just had some experience with business last week in my neighborhood, and it was very interesting. What we were told from a person in a neighboring county was where they have no ordinances, was that when SRDs, or they don't have zoning, so when neighborhoods with covenants tried to prohibit VHRs, they took them to court. It's very expensive. If they're homeowners associations like ours, we run just right close to the line financially all the time. We don't have a lot of reserve for court cases, and the homeowners associations lost. And that raised a red flag for me. My counsel to my homeowners association, and I'm adding this in addition to what's here because of the former comments, was to beef up our covenants, because we do not want them. Our president, Vicki Fransen, spoke at the Johnson Siding meeting. She represented 70 homeowners in that area, or landowners, we have about 64 homeowners. And we thought that was a significant contribution. We do not want them in our area. And we'll work the covenant angle, but we have other areas in the county that aren't organized like we are where it's an impact. My main point today that I wish to speak to, though, is what will happen in a neighborhood through the conditional use process? And the conditional use process, or CUP, gives the county authority over how the VHR industry will develop and expand into the future. And just as an aside there, in my And just as an aside there, in my observation, we are very much, we very much concentrate on what is today. We see today, we look at the past. We should be planning more into the future and what do we want? What do we want in this county for development? This is an industry and it's not a bad industry. There's some bad apples out there, but the majority are good managers. What do we want? Do we want them in suburban residential? Is that a plan for this county? I really have not heard from the county government side or the planners that that's what we want. We know the industry wants that without question in this county and in surrounding counties. But because these are houses, they're homes to some people, but what do we want for the future? So, VHR industry will develop and expand into the future and in itself, it is not a bad process. It's a good process. However, it is not benign. And that was obvious to me last week on a whole different subject and a couple of you were there. It's not benign. By virtue of the requirements set forth in the ordinance and the CUP process, neighbors will be pitted against one another. It is inherent in the process. And in order for the neighbors of the rental to have input, they must publicly present their opinion through the CUP process. If they're opposed to the rental, they will automatically be on the defensive and will have to present why they do not want the rental near them. This will negatively set them against their rental business neighbor. And we know that will happen. It has already happened where we, they may not even be legal, but that has happened and we know it will happen. And it is very difficult, if not impossible, for some to stand up and make these negative comments in a public way. For whatever reason, some cannot speak publicly. They just cannot do it. Others have trouble controlling what they say. They don't want to get up in front of someone, embarrass themselves, say something that they shouldn't. We have had people go before the Planning Commission, took every ounce of strength that they had to get up there and make any kind of a public comment, negative or positive. And this has long-term ramifications for a community. The resentment of the incursion of a VHR into an SRD will not go away and that ill-will will fester. And we have seen that in some neighborhoods already. The people don't decide, oh, I think it's fine next door. They continue, they haven't spoken. They continue to say, I don't like it. And bad things can happen. I was advised when I made this comment, as an aside to planning and, planning and zoning folks, the commission, not the staff. Well, if someone could not get up and speak publicly, they can send an email. And actually, I was offended by the comment. So they don't have to make a public presentation. My experience, and we've been at this nine months now, we've sat in a lot of meetings, we've been, we've sat in this room before you, listening to other things, planning and zoning, we have a lot of experience, those few of us who were on that committee. We have a lot of experience. And I can tell you, my impression of both planning and zoning and this is that the best way to present your opinion and make an impact is to get up before you and speak. Emails, they are helpful and letters are good, but if you really want to make an impact, it's much better to get up and speak. Don't be in there counting the pros and the cons and 40 are for and 20 are against. It's better to get up and speak. And some folks cannot do that. And then they carry that grudge. The original draft, and you've already heard this, and I didn't know that this would come up when I put this together, the original draft had a 300-foot buffer. And as Todd said, we started out at 500 and we compromised down to three so that some of the negativity in SRDs could be alleviated. And that 300-foot buffer was eliminated and we could see what was going to happen. It was eliminated through the planning and zoning process. So what we have here is a process that is very problematic for relationships within residential neighborhoods. And there is a solution to this. Okay? Some of you already know that I'm opposed to businesses in residential zoning districts unless they are for the convenience of the residents as the current ordinance is written or if they are silent and leave no footprint. And that was my experience last week was a CUP business permit request was before planning and zoning and they were my neighbors. And it's a totally silent business. Some who wrote letters in opposition, it raised opposition immediately. Okay? I knew they had a business. They have, it's silent. The, two of the three that wrote in opposition did not know it was a business and they, they didn't get all their boxes checked and something happened. Anyway, they didn't even know it was a business. I did, but some didn't. But all of a sudden, red flags went up. I talked to people, we had them calling, they thought there was going to be dust and traffic. Well, it wasn't even that kind of business, but they didn't know that. So, anyway, it's how quickly people can get in opposite positions in a neighborhood. So, if they're for the convenience of the residents that, as the current ordinance is written, or if they're silent and leave no footprint, I have no problem with it. VHRs are not silent and they leave a footprint. Therefore, and I have spoken on this many times, I am opposed to allowing them in SRDs beyond 14 days in a calendar year. And in my neighborhood, we do not have any vacation home rentals, but we've had, and of course, it would be illegal if we did. And we do have some who've been renting 14 days or less during the rally and they did not know that it was illegal. Okay? And this would allow them to do that, to continue to do that. The ordinance that you have before you with the permitted, they'd have to go through the CUP process, but if they have a license or a permit from the state, if they have it or they've applied, would allow a foothold into SRDs. And then the next step would be to review a year if there were no complaints and then open it wide. Okay? And you know what happens? We can see this already with attendance. People get really tired. And if, have to watch the planning and zoning agenda every meeting to see what's coming up, you're going to get tired of that. And people don't send their complaints in. They try and resolve them. They've got to send them in if they don't want their neighbors to be a VHR. So this ordinance would allow a foothold to get, or to get a foothold in residential districts. So what I'm asking is that you make a revision on page one under section 319B by striking the last sentence and not allowing them in SRDs. And I know that's a very tough position to take. It is not a very compromising position, but I just think SRDs are not the appropriate place. And this will eliminate the problem of pitting one neighbor against the other. Either that or put the 300-foot buffer back in. Give some relief to property owners who are there, they're full-time residents, they're there every day. Help them. They have rights as well. So do one or the other. Because if, if we let it creep, which is what has been proposed, let it creep, it's going to be wide open and we are going to have a mess. And it's going to cost us homeowners associations a lot of money. It will cost us now to tighten them up. If we have to go to court, it's going to cost us more. And I think we had to have better future planning. And do we want them? Is this what we want in residential districts? You talk to most full-time residents and you are going to get, no, we don't. So listen to that group as well. Okay, thank you. I thank you for listening to me and for serving as commissioners. It's not a fun job lots of time and I appreciate that. So, do you have any questions of me?
All right, Pam.
You'd like us to drop the suburban residential because it wouldn't pit one neighbor against the other?
That's one reason, yes.
Would you, could we still have neighbors being against neighbors in a low-density residential where apparently we're going to allow them?
I, I'm, my understanding in low, yes, I would say yes, just right off the top. But low-density residential, they're farther apart. And we're not real close together in my neighborhood, but you know, there's maybe 50 feet between our houses. But low-res, low-density residential, my understanding is that the people are farther apart. And some though...
They build on the outsides of their lot, but if they happen to be building next to one...
And I know one area and I've not heard from them. I've, I've been sending them information and it was zoned. No, as actually, that's limited ag, I think. There's only limited ag. Well, it's a residential neighborhood now. They're closer than 300 feet and it's prime. If I was in the business, I'd look. I mean, they're beautiful houses. Anything come up for sale, they'd make a wonderful VHR. And yet, they've got permanent residents who do, who do not want it. And they are, they're closer than 300 feet and that's limited ag. So you, you know, I just use, I use SRD, but really residential. But the 300-foot buffer would help everybody. Because that would give some distance. Like I'm 200 feet from that neighbor last week and I, that came in for their business and it's a woodworking where he's got saws and things and I can't hear him at 200 feet at my house. They're, they're very quiet to begin with, but I can't hear them. So some buffer zone would help. And I can tell you, in a community where the neighbors get pitted against one another, it's very difficult in these small communities. It doesn't go away.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Gomez. I live in Silver City. And I'll be short and brief because I've already sent you a letter that was included. But I just wanted to reiterate that the Pennington County ordinance, as it's currently written, specifically excludes uses which are not compatible with residential use, but permits certain non-residential uses which are of particular convenience to the residents of the district. And I have to ask you, I mean, VHRs have been illegal for 18 years. Why all of a sudden would a VHR be of benefit to me and my neighbors? For the life of me, I don't understand that. I'm urging you to please not allow this in SRDs beyond 14 days. A lot of what you're hearing here about pitting neighbor against neighbor, I didn't plan on saying this, but I can tell you, it makes a person sick to their stomach to have to come here, to have to speak against their neighbors. We live in a very small community. It has torn our community to shreds because of this issue. We're having to take sides. Are you okay? Are you not okay? Are you full-time? Are you part-time? It shouldn't even matter. Those aren't the things we want to be talking about in our town. We don't want to have, and just to know that I may have to come here from now and into the future, every time another VHR wants to pop up in my neighborhood and stand up here and speak against some people that I may really like, but in essence, I built my home in this neighborhood wanting a certain understanding that I had with the county of this is how my neighborhood was going to be, it just doesn't seem right. I mean, I also have to say that, you know, I'm told again and again that this CUP process is going to protect us, it's going to weed out the bad from the good. But let me ask you, I mean, these things have been illegal for 18 years and we have people that have thumbed their nose at the county and have continued to operate illegally. So why is this going to be any different? If they can't shut them down now, how are they going to make them do what they want them to do under the CUP? So I just ask you to please consider those questions that I've asked when you deliberate this ordinance amendment. Thank you. And any questions for me? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jake Cammer, Silver City. My hat goes off to those people that served on the committee, both sides, pro and con. I attended quite a few of the meetings and I was impressed. My hat also goes off to you people. You got to make the decision. I wasn't able to attend any of the zoning, planning and zoning meetings. I was a little dismayed when I saw the 300-foot buffer leave, the proposed ordinance. And to recoup a little bit, this is before you as commissioners because of some people's desire to commercialize residential areas. That's the only reason it's here. Because when you take your zoning ordinance as read by the previous speaker enacted in the seventies and try to apply what we see taking place now, proposed, they don't fit. Commercialization of a residential area, you have as a commission responsibility to all the taxpayers, not to those necessarily, or especially to those that want to commercialize something. That's why we have our different zoning ordinances, places, areas, commercial, industrial, residential, whatever. When I bought in my neighborhood, I've paid taxes in Pennington County for over 40 years. I didn't expect to have to go through anything like this. Sure, I knew there was a, a small commercial entity in town and zoned, properly zoned. Problems resulted and they expanded and this is where this has all come from. So again, I revert right back to the real reason you're here and we're here is an interest of some people to commercialize residential areas. I think outside of Silver, Hill City, the PUD process worked famously for the commission. That's a great concept that's been taking place up there. But when you, when it's allowed to go into neighborhoods that have been established for 50 to 100 years or better, and you start taking that neighborhood and pitting it neighbor against neighbor on a CUP. A CUP can work, but do we know it's going to work? You got a whole year in there. But you're asking as commissioners for the residents of these neighborhoods, close-knit neighborhoods, to step up and do your job for them in opposing a commercial interest coming into a residential area. In essence, if you approve this as written, this is what you're doing. Any questions? Thank you. I appreciate your time and your service.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Shagru from Silver City. And I was also a member of the committee that drafted this ordinance. I want to just touch on a few things. I've written you a couple of letters. My wife has also spoken in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The industry has said that, you know, our small communities, our suburban, little rural communities are resort communities or vacation destinations. And I would argue that point, that there's places like Hayward, High Seega, Johnson Siding, Placerville, Rockerville, Silver City. None of them are listed anywhere in the South Dakota tourism literature or on the Black Hills Badlands and Lakes Association literature. When you go on their websites, they don't exist. They're not there. How could they be a vacation destination? Yet they're invisible on the major publications and websites that advertise our tourist industry. Places like Hill City and Keystone, those are vacation destinations, those are tourist locations and they market themselves as such. Our little communities are not. Those little communities, those old mining towns have retained their residential character and they actually serve some very vital services. And I spoke in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission about that. They're important for a number of reasons to the residential residents of Pennington County. Since they don't have city governments, you're the government and we respect that and we, we look to you to provide us the, the regulatory protection from businesses that would turn our neighborhoods possibly into de facto motels without the long-term residents that we need to keep them vibrant and vital and alive. The ordinance... The ordinance, I feel, as it's written right now, is biased in favor of commercial business at the expense of the residential homeowners. We originally had the inclusion of a 300-foot buffer that would help you in regulating those commercial businesses from encroaching upon those residential neighborhoods, and try to keep those crowded, close-knit areas from having a bunch of businesses that are going to cause problems. If we don't have something in there to either restrict vacation homes from SRD, or to have some sort of a, a restriction on distances between homes that are being used as vacation home rentals, then I think it's going to undermine the essence of your zoning districts as you have them written. Otherwise, why even have SRD? I mean, really, it begs the question, why have SRD if we're going to allow the, the commercialization of that zoning district? The bottom line here is, is that we need to protect residents' rights. I want to also say that it's absolutely necessary to preserve those small communities and make sure that we don't drive out our full-time residents, because those are the folks that are part of those community associations, cemetery associations, fire protection districts, road districts, and volunteer fire departments. I'm the fire chief of a, of a volunteer fire department, and we have barely enough community members to provide that service to the residents of our fire protection district. That's essential if we're going to keep people safe in those rural areas of the county. The last thing I would say is, I'm not going to reiterate some other points in my letters. You have them. But how many vacation home rentals are we talking about? Nobody's really answered that for you, and I think it's important that you understand what the size of the equation here is. I've done some research, and I, I don't have copies of this for you, because it's not complete. I hope to give it to you at a future meeting. But right now, as I have dug into the commercial advertisements for vacation home rentals, I found 138 in Pennington County. There are an additional 29 on Craigslist that I can't tell you if they're duplicates or not, because they don't list phone numbers, they don't list addresses. But I can tell you pretty assuredly that there is at least 138 out there, and I continue to look to find out if there's more. And that's without regulation. They're all possibly, possibly operating illegally. Some of those are in PUDs, some of those are grandfathered, I'm sure, and are operating legally, because they existed prior to the, the zoning ordinances. But there's a chunk of them that are operating illegally that have been allowed to do so. Six of them have six or more bedrooms, and one of the things in here says that you can't have more than five bedrooms. One of them has eight bedrooms and a loft. It's huge. It's not a vacation home, it's a resort. Seven have a maximum occupancy of greater than 14, and that, given our, our current standards, you've got a limit of five bedrooms plus an additional four occupants. So the maximum that you could have in a vacation home rental is 14. There are seven out there that exceed that. There are three that have a maximum occupancy of 20 or more. Again, I don't call that a vacation home rental, I call that a resort. And based on the current list that's been provided to the committee, only about half of them are licensed by the South Dakota Health Department. So you've got a huge number that are out there occupa, that are operating in the county illegally, even in the eyes of the state. I want to just throw out one other thought, and I will end. If these were beer gardens, selling alcoholic beverages out of a garage, or a shed, or a shop in a backyard, how would you, as the county commission, view them based on your ordinances today? Would you just look the other way and allow this to happen? Because literally, that's what we're allowing these businesses to do in our neighborhoods today. We're looking the other way. And we are already seeing, based on some of the other testimony given, that this is not healthy. And I don't see it being healthy in any way, shape, or form. I would urge you to allow the 14-day use per year, as the state does, for events like the rally or hunting, because there are places out there that, that have hunting, whether it be large game or, or pheasant hunting in the eastern part of the county. That's just allowing residents to have some latitude to use their property within the zoning that it is placed, to make enough money to help offset their taxes. Beyond that, I would say, please, don't allow vacation home rentals in SRD. And if you do feel that that is a necessity to allow it in all zoning districts, then please place some restrictions in there, so that we don't pit neighbor against neighbor. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Gomez. To respect your time, I will keep my comments very brief. I will talk about one issue, and that is the issue of revenue and costs. One of the shortcomings of this ordinance is that, as it is written, it causes the county to incur expenses, but there is no associated revenue. A CUP of $300 will not cover the internal cost to process the application. We all find that many of these CUPs will have more dissent from neighbors and potentially more enforcement problems than any other CUP that you have to deal on a daily basis. All of this will create a drag on the services of the county. This would not be a big problem if this ordinance also provided for some revenue to the county, but it does not. This ordinance was modeled after the one they have in place in Lake Tahoe. It is very similar, but with one obvious difference. Over there, they have the ability to charge a transient occupancy tax. It happens to be 10%. We don't have that ability here. For those communities around the United States that have allowed rentals, it is because they, they can derive revenue from them. That's why they allow them. As it is, a VHR here pays 5%, 5.5% in taxes, 4% sales tax to the state, 1.5% hotel tax to the state. If I'm not mistaken, none of that comes to the county. Why devise an ordinance that helps so few and brings no revenue to the county? Unfortunately, the industry has not providing, provided any economic impact information that could be useful to you. I believe that any revenue that is brought by this, by the industry is at the expense of the well-established lodging industry. I think that the economic impact is a zero-sum game. Therefore, if you look at this as strictly as a cost-benefit analysis, the county would be better served by not allowing it in neighborhoods where the cost of processing would be higher, but the benefits to those there are lower. So please do not allow it in SRD. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We've completed testimony. What's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I think we need a five-minute break.
Five minutes?
For everybody. I think they're the comfort break in need.
Would you settle for 10?
Well, if that's what you want, yes.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yep, slow move.
Have a motion and a second to take a 10-minute break. Meeting? Call the meeting back to order.
Never had it come out.
I think we're in good shape. We'll reconvene the meeting and dispose of item I. The disposition is to take some kind of action.
Okay, now it's all lightened up. What are we going to do?
Some kind of action, either postpone, table, pass, amend, whatever. The vacation home rental ordinance. This is the first reading, and there will be a second reading if it survives this one. Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a question that I haven't asked, or anyone has. We, we have the ordinance, and then we have the recommendation, the resolution, but that's not on our agenda, the resolution. Is it considered part of the ordinance? I don't see how it could be, but I'm just curious as to what we're supposed to do with the resolution.
Well, the resolution was... Just a, a resolution that states, if you want, I can read the whole thing. A resolution waiving certain fees associated with Section 319, which is what this ordinance would be, of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Whereas the Pennington County Board of Commissioners recently adopted an amendment to the Pennington County zoning ordinance adding Section 319. And whereas Pennington County zoning ordinance assesses a doubled application, application fee and a $500 administration fee for any late conditional use permit application. And whereas the Pennington County Board of Commissioners has the authority under Section 511 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance to waive late fees. And whereas the Pennington County Planning Commission has recommended that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners grant a grace period for applications under the newly amended Section 319. Therefore, be hereby resolved that from the date of this resolution until blank, depending on when this gets adopted, doubled application fees, administration fees associated with any conditional use permit applications under Section 319 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance are waived. However, the planning director shall collect the standard fees associated with a conditional use permit.
So when is, I, I mean, is it going to be considered separate? Are we considering it today? What are you, what are we going to do with this resolution, since it's part of our package?
Well, it wouldn't be passed until probably the second reading of the ordinance amendment as it's going through the process. And then you would consider it, you don't even have to do this, you could consider whether or not to adopt this resolution.
Okay. Because I wanted to make sure, since it was in today's pack of what you were really wanting done with it.
Just to let you know that the Planning Commission recommended that this resolution be a part of this Section 319.
Patrick, did you just want some exercise, or? Does that help you, Commissioner Traubman?
Yep.
I just thought maybe we missed it, what you wanted done with it, is it going to be brought forward for discussion? I just wasn't sure.
There was an additional motion made at the Planning Commission also that addressed that the issue of allowing it in a suburban residential district be reconsidered a year from now to see how the whole ordinance is acting out throughout the year, once it goes into place, to see if there's any complaints, if there's any issues with allowing it in all these allowed areas through this ordinance. And if there really are none, to have the Planning Commission and the county board to review this whole ordinance to see if it's, should be allowed in SRD or not. Yes, neither of them would be an issue if you don't proceed with adopting this ish, this ordinance amendment.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Dan.
Yes.
Dan, if, if, if this ordinance was passed, as it's written today, what impact is that going to have on your office in trying to enforce all of these performance standards?
Well, the ones that are, would need the conditional use permit, they would have to be reviewed through our normal conditional use permit process. There would be conditions attached, and they would have to abide by these standards that are outlined in this ordinance. And if they don't, and we start getting complaints regarding these, it would go in front of the Planning Commission for review, and if Planning Commission deems it appropriate, those, that conditional use permit would be denied, and they would no longer be allowed to have a vacation home rental on the property.
Would, would your office be going out to verify that the complaint is valid?
Yeah, we do that with all of our complaints. We go out and verify. Of course, a lot of these would be hard to see that they're actually meeting that. It'd be based on probably the number of complaints. If the complaints are, we would just send it in front of the Planning Commission to have them review it. The applicant would be required to show up and to address the, their, the, via, the complaints on the property.
So based on your experience of having went through the hearings and stuff on this, you don't think this is going to have any significant impact on your office staff in having to verify any of this stuff?
Oh, we're certainly going to be busier, because, you know, as indicated, there are some 138 vacation home rentals out there. How many are legal is unknown. There's a, you know, PUDs currently allow them, there's a number of grandfathered ones, there's a number of them that already have the legal use to do them on the property. So, yeah, we're probably going to get inundated for a while with conditional use permits in our office. As you've heard, there has been a lot of testimony, both ways, as in to support or not to support this. This, I believe, is a compromise that the committee came up with to hopefully address both sides of the issue. Of course, depending on how it's adopted, it's not going to have everybody happy in the county. But this did address a lot of the concerns. It was talked about very lengthy, and we had a number of meetings talking about the whole issue.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure where I'm at with all of this. I mean, when I look through these regulations, it seems to me like some of them are, are very restrictive. And, and, you know, the quiet hours and nothing happening outside after 10 o'clock at night until 7 o'clock in the morning. The, you know, and then on one hand, when I read through some of this, it seems like we're trying to set these vacation rental homes up so that they really are not having any negative impact in a neighborhood. But then, on the other hand, we say, you got to put this sign up out in front of your house that says that you're, with two-inch white letters that says that it is a vacation rental home, which seems to be kind of contradictory to having it blend into the neighborhood. And so, so I don't know, as I look through this, there are just a, a number of these things that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me.
Well, the exterior sign is a rather smaller sign. It's meant to be approximately only 16 inches by 24 inches. So it is a rather small sign, but it was meant to be an informational sign for if people were driving by and they saw something going on in the property, they would see that it is a vacation home rental, and they, the number is required to be on that, so they would have somebody to call. And then that's also why they have a local contact, that somebody has to be within 50 miles, that they can either get there or call the people that are renting it out to address some of their concerns. And so it's, is meant to be informational and to help out with the, keeping the property to be a minimal impact to the neighborhood.
I have a, kind of a technical question. If the first reading is approved today, is there a specified time between the first reading and the second reading? And what is that time?
More than five days.
More than five days, but no limit on maximum? And I guess my point is that if this goes forward, I'm assuming that there would be some proposed amendments. And in order to allow adequate time for getting the wording of the amendments in such a way that we don't have a half-hour discussion here...
in such a way that we don't have a half-hour discussion here at this meeting, that whoever proposes an amendment can have time to write it and get it tested by Jay and Patrick. So that we're at least have a course of action that is potentially... Will deliver a product. I would suggest that if this is passed today under the first reading, that we identify enough time between now and the second reading to accomplish that. That make sense? Are we ready for a motion? Are you ready to write one if somebody makes one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think what they're gonna do is wait till they put my foot in my mouth. So, I guess I'd just do that, get it over with. I really don't like this thing start to finish. And I was against it the last time we tried to do it. But I was willing to settle for these changes and these options that were basically approved by everybody that was on the committee and the planning commission. So, I guess I'd make a motion to approve this, the first reading, as presented.
Is there a second?
Are you gonna add a time on there?
I think we should do that.
I think we can just keep postponing it, can't we?
I would recommend that we do it as a separate motion. That way everyone understands it.
Okay. As long as I can make changes, I'll second it.
Moved and seconded that the first reading be approved as presented. Is that correct? I almost hate to ask for discussion, but if there's anyone that has an urgent need to speak to that motion, please do so now.
I can handle that, too. I call the question.
We gotta vote on the question. We might discuss that for quite a while. Question's been called for. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
I'm against it.
Against calling the question? Oh, you wanna talk about it?
I did, but I guess I won't.
All right.
Wouldn't that three to one?
It was three to one.
Okay.
And so, we do now have the motion and the second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Carried, three to one. Now, a motion relative to setting the date for the second reading.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure. I think all we have to do is just add it to the agenda. And if everybody has their ducks in a row that wanna amend things or can amend things, if not, we'll just postpone it to the next meeting.
Well, my inclination is to...
Or to keeping the people around here.
Lay out some clarity to the public in terms of, one, a deadline to get your amendments politic to a commissioner or whomever. And number two, so that the expectation of when some finality would be brought, rather than checking every time to see, well, is it coming up or isn't it?
Mr. Chair, how about the first meeting in April?
If that's a motion, then I'd call for a second.
It's not April 1st, is it?
Dad, for lack of a second, you wanna try another one?
Nope, can't do it. Not until somebody else does.
Well, you can't make the same motion twice, but if you...
Put a different date. Mr. Chair, I would rather go the middle of April, just because I think it's...
Rather go to what?
The middle of April.
Middle of April?
So, that would be the 17th of April.
Second meeting in April?
Yes, so I would make that motion for the second.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure, why not?
Motion is second to hold second reading, the second meeting of April 2012. Any further discussion?
And what we would do is submit our changes to Dan.
I think...
And everyone could...
Whatever process would get it in the hands of Patrick or Jay. But the concept of what you want to amend, the amendment you wanna make should be delivered to Dan and go from there. And if a citizen who's not on the commission wishes to pursue an amendment, contact a commissioner that is willing to carry it forward. And they will do so. If they tell you no, then look for another commissioner. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Post? Motion carried. You have a question?
Mr. Chairman, this is just a procedural question again. So, changes are gonna be proposed, sent to planning director. At what point will be for the mid-April county commission meeting? At what point will the final version of this ordinance with whatever changes be available for us to review? How does that work?
It won't be until the commission meeting because the proposed amendments to it will have to be approved by the full county commission. So, it won't be until we get to that meeting mid-April that you'll have... That you'll know what the final version of it's going to be.
So, then the minutes are required to be published so many days in advance? Is that when they'd be available?
I think to answer your question is the proposed amendments will be included in the packets, which are available the Friday prior to the meeting.
Okay, with the agenda, I meant to say, right?
Yes, that's the agenda of the proposed amendments will be included on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, we're ready for committee reports. And I think Sheriff Tom and Commissioner Holloway had something?
Yes, well, I had a couple of committee meetings since the last meeting that we had. One of them was the emergency management meeting. And just to let you know, at our emergency management meeting, there was a proposed amendment to that agreement so that we can be included... Could include the representative from the volunteer firemen from the fire service board. And so, that's being redrafted. And at some point here in the future, it'll be presented to this board for their approval as well as the city council. And then the other committee meeting I had was the city-county alcohol and drug programs. And there was a presentation presented at that talking about some of the things that they got going there. And I've asked Sheriff Tom and Chief Deputy Mueller to present to the whole board because I found it very interesting. And at 10 minutes, five minutes to 2:00 in the afternoon, hopefully you'll find it interesting, too.
I can hardly wait.
Do I need to call the question?
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. And yes, I haven't had lunch yet either, so I'm gonna try and be brief so I can go get a sandwich. But as Commissioner Holloway alluded to, we did have our city-county alcohol and drug advisory board meeting last week. And if you'll recall, last year, we did some shuffling of, I guess, our facilities in North Rapid. We closed Friendship House, moved the work release population back down to the jail and repurposed Friendship House in terms of the population we were serving, still incarcerated, but types of individuals. We opened up 22 female beds, which we didn't have, and opened up the ability to increase our Friendship House population from 31 all the way up to low 50s, maybe up to 70 if we needed to. And by doing all the shuffles we did, we freed up some space at city-county alcohol and drug as well. And Chief Deputy Mueller's gonna talk about what we put in place as far as what we call a sobering unit. I think all these things, one, they provide more services for the county and the citizens of the county and for Rapid City because we're partners in detox with the city on that program. And it's more efficient, more cost-effective way to do business. So, increased services and more efficiently delivered. So, with that, I know Brian's gonna talk about the sobering unit and some of the other things we're doing in terms of initiatives up there. One of them ties into the crisis care center, which you seen Karen Romi present on earlier today, so.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Brian Mueller. And I just wanted to talk really quickly about the sobering bed project that we have going on up at city-county alcohol and drug program. And this is a concept that our... That the collaborative that worked on the crisis care center came across down in San Antonio. And through the course of the last probably year and a half, we've been looking at how that program might fit into what we've got going on up at city-county alcohol and drug programs. And with the move of the Friendship House over to the new Adams Street facility, we freed up some space over at city-county alcohol and drugs up on La Crosse Street. And we started what we call the sobering bed pilot program, which is a six-month pilot program testing the sobering bed project. And we took some freed-up space. And in an effort to reduce some of the services that were burning up on recidivistic people that are coming into that facility that are not wanting help, we've created this pod up there, which consists of seven mattresses, where we bring people in that are not wanting services. But generally, they're being brought into the facility through law enforcement. And we're able to provide them a safe place to be overnight. They're not on an alcohol hold, not on a 24-hour hold. We're providing very minimal medical services, sack lunches as opposed to hot meals, and we're providing no counseling services. While at the same time, we're using a mentor program where people who have successfully gone through the programs up there are coming in and talking to these people, asking them to participate voluntarily in the detox program where they would be... Have more services brought available to them. So, through this pilot program, we hope to be able to show a reduced cost to those people that are not wanting to take full advantage of those resources and be able to retool those resources in a manner that will be more effective for our community. So, that's one of the programs that we have going on.
And if I can just offer a comment on that, a detox bed is $230 a night. That's what it costs us for a detox bed. Instead of wasting $230 a night on somebody that doesn't want the services, we now have a mattress on a hard floor. And so, for no additional staff, no additional funding, we provide that service and we aren't burning $230 a day on a detox bed for somebody that doesn't want the service.
And then the second thing that we've come across, it's a very recent development, and we're just getting ready to implement this, is called a telemental health. And the folks from behavior management over at the crisis care unit have graciously agreed to let us utilize their qualified mental health professionals over at that facility through internet capabilities that we have purchased and we're getting... We're doing the installs up at detox at the jail and our juvenile services center. And what this is going to do for us is, after hours and weekends, when we're have... Right now, if we have mental health issues in those facilities, deputy sheriffs are going up doing evaluations. And in most situations, our only option with those folks is to take them down to the emergency room and do a mental hold on them. This will allow us to utilize a qualified mental health professional to do an over-the-internet interview with that person and see if there's other things that we can take, other steps that we can take prior to doing a mental hold on them that will be a big benefit and a cost savings to Pennington County if we're able to successfully do that. Right now, we have everything bought in place. And we're just working on some technical difficulties over at the crisis care center. When we get that resolved, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to write out some guidelines and implement that program.
And since the county's already a partner in the crisis care center, again, it's not gonna require any additional funding from the county because the county's already a contributing partner. It's just one more resource we can use out of the crisis care center. We have some cost with some of the technology, but I think it's minimal in comparison to what we're gonna gain on the other side.
You wanna go have your sandwich?
Time to eat, I guess.
You ran everybody off except Nick.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very good report. Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Well, three of us, I guess, we're at the Western Dakota Tech library meeting. And so, that, you know, we're working on trying to figure out how that should all operate.
You're the official?
Yeah, we don't have a second meeting set up just yet, but they're working on it. I had to send in my dates, so hopefully they'll have that. The other thing, Black Hills, I went to the Black Hills Community Health meeting. And they are supposed to have purchased their property this, the 27th, for their new facility. And they're supposed to contact us back with when they get that done. And then we'll begin talking about whether or not we can actually co-op in a building with them. Donna and I visited with them a little bit. And we've talked about a condominium-style thing, which is cheaper for us. You know, we have part of the building, but we need to see if we can legally do that. And Jay is checking that out for us. But I haven't heard back from them for sure. They thought they would have everything finalized the 27th, but I haven't heard back that they have, unless you have, you maybe?
Nope.
Okay, so.
Thank you. Ken?
We haven't had a lot of activity in our committees. I've been to the base. We had 28 maintenance group awards program last Thursday night, or last Friday night. General Baker from the Pentagon was here and gave the award banquet speech and passed out all of the awards and everything to the people in the maintenance group that won awards. Today, the reason I left today, and I'll lay it out if anybody wants to look at it, but I had a retirement ceremony at the base this morning. And Lieutenant Colonel Duane Slaughter retired after 26 years in the Air Force. And he started out his career as an enlisted man in the pride hangar out here at the base back when they were putting the missile silos in. And then he took some time off, went to school, went to OCS and became an officer. And then he wound up about 26 years total. And he retired in the same place that he started his career in, in the Air Force. And so, I'll leave that laid there if anybody wants to see it. You can see the other things that I've been to here. And we've been to the base recently, so that's about it.
Thank you. I don't have any reports. We're at the public comment period and it's up to you, Nick.
We wore them out.
Well, anyway, next item is executive session. We have a motion.
So, move.
Motion is second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried.